This is the business meeting at 6:30. If you want to speak, there's a pad in the back there. Please put your name and address on that pad. The first thing we're going to do is approve the minutes of our last two meetings, which were March 19th, Jan 20th, 2024. We'll see when we get there, it's over, and I'll introduce the motion in a second.
I would move to approve the minutes of the 2-day march.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in there, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any other business, Governor, or do we go right into this presentation?
Do we have any other business?
Okay. Here we have a presentation, or a number of presentations, on the historic houses in Fort. So if anyone wants to speak to that, the podium's open for you.
If I could really quick, Jerry, just to leave that in. If we could attempt to keep down the repetition, if somebody says something in front of you that's the same thing, just reinforce it and not generally repeat the exact same thing. We'll certainly accept any, it's not really an interactive thing, but if you want to have a comment to direct to us, please do so. Now's your time. This is for Green Street. I know a lot of folks are here from Green Street. And, or anything in the fort associated with the historic homes, please come up and give what you've got. Now's your time.
Steve, you want to start or some?
Oh, wonderful. After trying it, it's low, I haven't now done it up and do this again. Mr. Chairman, Members of Planning Commission, City Staff. My name is Stephen Gettner, I'm an attorney. I also live on Number 7, Green Street. I'm here with my wife. The owner's record is the discerned Bronstein Holding Trust. My wife and I are the co-trustees of the trust who own the real estate. We, little background, my wife and I moved for Thomas. Don't hold this against me, but I'm a cupcake guy, so. I already pulled this one, ready? My wife and I decided to move for Thomas to raise our two children, William and Madeline, here. We have a distinct interest in historic homes. We lived in the past in a 1890 Queen Anne Victorian on Rosso Avenue in the North Ammendale neighborhood. We also restored a dilapidated 1890 Italianate house in Newport on Monroe Street in the East Row Historic District. Then we decided to move up the hill to Fort Thomas in one of the officer's houses, and we are blessed to have done little work to keep that up unlike our previous house. Professionally, to my background, I'm an attorney for the last nineteen and a half years. One of my niches of practice are land and planning zoning. I recently worked for the Cincinnati City Council when I staffed the Economic Development and Zoning Committee, and also served as a staff member for the city council member who was assigned to the Hamilton County Planning and Zoning Board. I also have litigated cases, planning and zoning cases, here in Campbell County. For example, I represent the opponents who successfully set aside in a restrictive covenant the area of Cabrayabrin with the former Beverly Hill Southern Club. During that, I've also represented developers and also land use folks. So I think I have a little bit of knowledge on Chapter 100 and planning and zoning matters. So I bring a little bit of a unique ability to that as its process. Most recently, I was involved in some almost litigation with the city of Newport regarding the expansion of the Buena Vista Historic District. They were deciding whether or not to expand the historic district. During that process, we discovered procedurally several issues with the process the city of Newport was going to endeavor upon that was recommended by their consultant, which was not your consultant. And so we reached an agreement for them to redo the process. Unfortunately, here, we see a similar pickup that could occur. In the east, when Buena Vista was going to be adopted as Historic Overlay District, they were going to unilaterally adopt the East Row Historic Regulations, and which were a dire need of updating. So in the interim, they were going to adopt the Department of Interior National District Standards as a stopgap for the Buena Vista neighborhood. There are several cases, I'm not going to get into it, Tim, we're not going to have a legal debate on this tonight. I don't think it's going to get to that point, frankly, because this appears to be much more collaborative career. You cannot, there are several cases published Kentucky decisions stating you cannot adopt the Historic Overlay MAP Amendment without first passing regulations to govern the subsequent MAP overlay, meaning that you can also not adopt the Department of Interior Guidelines as a stopgap regulation in the interim when you then subsequently adopt the Historic Overlay MAP Amendment. So if the Planning Commission and the city council as policymakers decide to adopt a Historic Overlay District without doing the work of adopting specific regulatory standards applicable to the area first, you run into procedural problems because the Department of Interior Guidelines are guidelines, they're not local laws. The regulations, such as the East Row, East Roads Historic Regulations, are a city law, they're a local law, they're ordinance, and they just, they take what you can and cannot do. They're a law, the Department of Interior Guidelines. It would be as I tell my, I would tell my kid, don't speed, that's a guideline. The speed limit is 55 miles an hour, that's a law. That's the most simplistically I can think of describing the guideline versus a regulation. Also, I think with all due respect, there's been a lack of transparency in this process when and if you do decide to do a Historic Overlay District in the Tower Park area, which is obviously an National Historic Presidential District. It would have been more prudent, in my opinion, to engage all the affected homeowners, for example, having a town hall, a meeting with staff or the consultant, with all the people in Green and Pearson and Alexander Circle, who would be subject to that, to gain, you know, have it not be such a, hey, you know, the government is going to do something without a collaborative effort. So we welcome that opportunity. And thirdly, and lastly, I have consulted, not on behalf of the HOA, I'm not here representing the HOA in any kind of legal capacity, I'm here as a resident who happens to have a lawyer, but I'm still no planning and zoning law. If the goal of this was in fact to clean up the 1990 Development Agreement and the 1990, our HOA, I think that me and my wife, and I think others, and I don't want to speak for the others, would be welcome to an opportunity, instead of doing Historic Overlay District, which is an additional layer of regulation, that maybe going back and hiring a law firm to rewrite and update the Development Agreement and our HOA docs as partners in the process, at least with Green Street, that would be a welcome way to achieve the same goal in a less onerous regulatory way. I believe wholeheartedly in Occam's razor, which is you can get, the easiest way to get to the same result is the easiest and least resistant path. And doing that maybe, at least with my neighbors on Green Street, which is, I've heard, you know, I watched your last meeting, that's kind of why we're here, is that we are a very high-functioning HOA. We have, and we have, are very much substantially in compliance with the Department of Interior's Guidelines. In order for us to do anything outside, eight out of the 10 homes have to approve this. You heard something about a deck last week, or excuse me, last month? That was at our house. And a little bit of context was that we had an old porch that was not the current building codes. We have a nanny who was walking down the steps with our one-year-old daughter, and because the steps were out of code and she was kind of rushing to catch another kid, she tripped down the steps, which were in good repair but out of code, broke an ankle, face planted my one-year-old, and an ambulance had to come. So that kind of transpired, that kind of was the reason that we decided that we needed to update our back porch, back deck. We went through our process, we presented the plans to our HOA as our HOA documents and the Development Agreement required. That was approved. Nine, nine oh, nine oh one, with one home not being there. It was then submitted to the staff, and it's my understanding that your Historic Preservation Consultant reviewed it to see if the deck was, would take away from the historic significance of the home at Seven Green. It was deemed that it was not internally and administratively, and then our permit was set to work. That is how Green Street has operated for almost 40 years. And we, you know, that, we don't need additional regulation and an overlay district since Green Street is a high-functioning HOA that has all of these layers that are frankly more, there's more oversight for us governing ourselves than that the Urban Design Review Board could provide, because we're policing ourselves. Now, you may have other people who think that we haven't done things that are, that have taken away from the historic significance of our homes. These are homes built in the 1890s. You can't let common sense get in the way of updating things and adhering to a modern building standards. So if y'all have any questions, I know Mr. Barton said that this is not necessarily a back and forth or a questioning, but if any of you have any questions for me, I live here in town, Mr. Schneider knows how to get ahold of me. And I'm, just for the record, I'm not speaking for the HOA, I do not have a client, I'm not shopping for clients, but I thought it would be prudent based on my subject matter expertise and having a unique ability in this space to present, and at least present these issues, to give you an opportunity so you don't fall into a hole where some, you know, jump into the hole where you present the city with potential liability for not having the right processes in place and getting to where you may want to go, or where, and also offer an opportunity and partnership to collaborate with us to maybe get to the same place in a different way. So thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Ally, did you want to go?
Yeah. So my name is Ally Alessandro. I too like Stephen, I'm an attorney, but I'm not formally trained in zoning and planning and zoning regulations. I'm also not here on behalf of the HOA. I'm here on behalf of me and my husband, Brian Alessandro. I'm sure a lot of you know him. He's a teacher at the middle school and also a traffic and cross-country coach. We've lived at eight Green Street since 2017, three months after the birth of our first daughter, and we too were interested in historic homes, having lost out on a historic home on Grand Avenue about six weeks prior. I'm just here speaking, like I said, as a resident of Green and Green only. I'm not going to come to these meetings and call out fellow park residents for my own perception of what is deemed historically accurate. I'll stay in my lane and suggest that other people that come to these meetings do the same. The Military Commons HOA was founded, like Steve said, about 40 years ago. It's older, it's older than me at this point. And it's, it was created in order to continue the city to regulate the street and have some sort of city collaboration while simultaneously taking a huge financial burden off of the city's already alarmingly extensive plate, because remember, the city pays for nothing when it comes to these houses. The city has control in this situation, and I'm not quite sure what more the city's looking for and for what purpose. Why now? Why after 40 years are we now sitting here talking about additional regulations when we've had a fully functioning HOA? Is it because of the backlash of One Highland? Is it because of what happened in Alexander Circle? These two projects were passed pretty quickly with no regulations, and the backdoor approach of attempting to regulate Alexander Circle, at least at a cursory level, and at least that's the perception, is not lost on our small park community. But why Green Street now? We've had a fully functioning HOA that's operated successfully. Without the HOA and under complete city control, many of the community members, probably here too, remember a time when the homes on Green Street were low-income rentals with electrical issues, water, and pests running through them. Since the city's relinquishment of the homes, they've come a thousandfold, and I think everybody can agree. I don't need to show you the pictures. People saw them when we graciously opened our doors during the Sesquicentennial and allowed residents of the community to walk the homes. Or better yet, you can take a look at the pictures in the exhibits at the museum across the way. I'm not sure how people think Green operates. No one from the city zoning or planning has bothered to ask, but under HOA management, under private ownership, I'd like to actually tell you what we've accomplished in the last 40 years, if not even sooner, at least during my tenure on Green Street. Installation, preservation, and maintenance of historically accurate lighting. I think we can all agree that historical accuracy would require no modern lighting, which I don't think actually our insurance company would appreciate. It's something that obviously needs to exist. All the exteriors have been restored and continue to be maintained via routine maintenance, just like every other Fort Thomas home. People are routinely maintaining their homes during the summer seasons and not doing the same during the winter seasons. We routinely maintain our homes, just like other members of the community who own homes from around the same time. The windows have been restored, and I say restored because replacement windows are actually not an option for us. They are not historically accurate, even though light replacements do actually exist these days. We have been subject to storm windows for the last, I think my homes probably had them the last 25 years, which I'm sure everybody can appreciate is not energy efficient. But we continue to maintain these inefficient windows with the storm windows in an effort to continue to preserve the historic nature of the homes themselves. We now have central air, also something that didn't exist when the homes were built. And we also have HV, or central heating. Some neighbors still have radiant heat, and they contend it's better, but these are all welcomed updates that you, or I, or anybody else in this room would make to their homes in an effort to maintain them and keep them as accurate as possible. The MC HOA, most recently, and while I was on the board, paved and maintained the street, installed and maintained new curbing, and continued to maintain the sidewalks, again with no assistance from the city. Everybody, I think, can agree that we are pretty open with our street. We allow residents of Fort Thomas and people who come to the area to walk our street, to allow their dogs to walk on our street, and we maintain the road, the curbing, and the sidewalks, so that residents, as well as the public, can appreciate the homes. We don't get assistance for that, and most of the foot traffic is public use. We've done a great job, and we continue to do a great job. I'm not quite sure why we're being lumped into this group, and I beg of you to answer the question, why now? Why would we have been such a fully functioning HOA for almost 40 years? Why is it at this moment, this is, this is why, why are we here?
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Bill Hooper. I am the current president of Military Commons HOA on Green Street within Tower Park. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you, and thank you for your service to our community. Over the last 24 years, I've witnessed a number of public discussions in this space. I've always been struck by the numbers of slings and arrows heaped upon our public officials. Sometimes wonder if your positions can shoot home with a little bit of combat pay. I have no slings and arrows for you today. I look forward to engaging with all of you on what's best for the community that we all love. To give you a little bit of background, I'm going to try to be brief. I've been a resident of Fort Thomas since 2000, and although I am not one of the original homeowners on Green Street, a few are here with us tonight and can bear witness to the relationship between the city and the Military Commons HOA in its entirety, I'm happy to say it's been a good one. The city is always to its credit and attentive to us despite the fact we are a relatively small constituency. In practice, it has been a great example of public-private cooperation and what is possible when prudent people exchange ideas for the greater good. We have worked with the city on numerous projects, such as our lighting project that integrates with the gate post owned by the city. At that time, the city donated later, allowed us to use their post. We've supplied power and maintained the power bill on that lighting project, but it was great cooperation between the city, and it had a nice impact in the park and on our In addition to that, we maintain the parking lot jointly between the Armory and Green Street. That is a joint line in which we have a number of spots required to coordinate with the city. Recent restructuring on the entrance to Green Street, at the city's request, sidewalk repairs, we do share a couple of joint curbs, lines for the water district, and collaborating with the recreational department on wonderful park events that bring us regarding parking. Although not always ideal, we occasionally deal with someone marinating in our bushes after a concert, or scuffle in the parking lot that originated on a basketball court. And my favorite, people helping themselves to our parking spots. Overall, it's been a little bit like living in Mayberry, it was urban, it's been really nice. Over the years, we have steadily observed the rise in the quality of the park. The properties on both Pearson and Green have suffered years of neglect and a lack of maintenance and budget prior to being sold to the public. My home's handcrafted woodworking was buried under 17 layers of lead-based paint. Roofs were in rough shape, porches were riding, electrical wasn't fireproof, it had been a brick sorely needed, a tuck point. Properties auctioned back in the early 90s for $80,000 when purchased from the city to give you an idea of their condition. Going private with the properties was exactly what they needed. Under the care of vested owners, the properties were restored, and today the market is in the 700-plus range. The original HOA board was chaired by the city administrator and the city attorney, the attorney, and one homeowner, which shortly became completely, where the board shortly became completely homeowner-administered, and the city maintained rights of the developer, including architectural review, which is, as you heard earlier, the standard we've been operating under for that timeframe. We've also witnessed the updates to the park, including the amphitheater, the park enclosures, and the ballpark. And of course, we witnessed the years of neglect on the original officer circle, or the Alexander Circle in the back, and the city's success in acquiring those properties after much years of wrangling and turning them around again by developing them and then getting them into the hands of vested owners. In short, the city has been doing a great job with Tower Park, and has impressed us with how far they can stretch a limited budget to great effect to our development and the enjoyment of the broader community. It is my understanding that we are currently reviewing the zoning across the city as a part of a five-year review. I can't imagine that this hasn't been a daunting and challenging process, just given its scope. Again, I want to thank you for taking it on. In the context of this review, it is my understanding that the city is asking the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on creating a Historic Overlay District, using the Secretary of Interior Standard for Rehabilitation, I believe, and I welcome being corrected if I am wrong, that this is being suggested by the city to create a unified standard and a degree of clarity on standards from an enforcement perspective as applies to Tower Park. Can I pause here and ask if that's basically correct?
I would say so.
Am I often in length?
Tell me exactly what ways, what you are asking us to agree with. If you could repeat that one more time, just to make sure I understand.
It is my understanding that the city is asking the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on creating a Historic Overlay District using the Secretary of Interior Standard for Rehabilitation. I believe, and I welcome being corrected if I am wrong, that this is being suggested by the city to create a unified standard and a degree of clarity on standards from enforcement perspective as it applies to Tower Park.
I don't think that the city is pushing us or directing us to do that. We've had some joint meetings with the city and discussed that matter. What we're doing right now is not anything legal. This is, the proposed zoning ordinance is a recommendation to the city council, and the city council will have the final say on whatever happens. So if that clarifies, if that clarifies the situation, we do not, the new zoning ordinance has to be approved and adopted by the city council, not by the Planning Commission. So we're making a recommendation to the, to the city council.
Is that recommendation originating here, or was there a mandate given to?
No, there wasn't a mandate. Well, the mandate's from the state. What we're supposed to do the separate five years is review it. Now, it hasn't happened five years, because we've been doing this for two years. We were looking at a form-based zone, and that got thrown out after a year's worth of work. And then COVID also had something to do with that, so, yeah, we are behind, behind schedule on this, and this is probably two and a half years in the making so far. So we're trying to get this done. In fact, we've had double meetings in order to try and cover this, this material.
So I think it would help me and everybody else if we could understand a little bit as to where the interior standard is coming from, why? The Secretary of the Interior Standard.
Can you deal with, I mean, what is actually, what does the overlays and, is that the real issue? I mean, I've heard three folks say it's really this additional level of oversight that you're uncomfortable with.
I think more for me, it's the, the standard that we're applying. It's the Interior Secretary, or the Secretary of Interior Rehabilitation Standard. Sorry, that's a mouthful in our practice. But it's that particular standard that has us concerned, and we don't know the origins of that and what the impetus behind the suggestion is, because I know you're exploring that option, but we don't understand why or what aims are perceived might be available there.
So right now, all the homes on Alexander Circle are subject to those standards, as are the homes on Pearson. And that happened, and we can chase around for a second and tell you how that happened. That is essentially what the situation is right now. Pearson is already subject to them, Alexander Circle is subject to them. So in order to have a unified standard throughout the park, it would then be applied to Green Street as well.
Okay, so the idea here is because the other two communities have adopted that, to then apply that to Green Street, I hesitate to say impose, but the idea would be that Green Street would fall under what they have adopted for themselves. Is that correct?
I would not say they've adopted it for themselves. In the case of Alexander Circle, when that was brought in, the city code was actually amended to say expressly within the code that they are subject to the Secretary of Interior Standards and the design standards that were imposed by the VA. So that, so that's how that happened. When Green and Pearson split, and I don't remember how many years ago that happened, but when they split, the HOA documents for Pearson say that they are subject to the standards from the Kentucky Heritage Foundation Heritage Council, which is essentially the Secretary of Interior Standards. So, you know, whether or not you would say that they adopted them for themselves or they were imposed upon them, when that split happened, that's how it was given, how they became under those standards at that time. And then, of course, you are still under the standards that, the language that was put in place in 1990.
Right. Well, I guess based on your feedback, I would say then Alexander Circle had it imposed upon them, and Pearson adopted it for themselves. Would that be fair?
I would say that's somewhat fair. We don't know, I think what happened is that the VA imposed it as a condition for We don't know, I think what happened is that the VA imposed it as a condition for the city to take the homes, but I do not know that for a fact, so I hesitate to say that.
All right. And so then it's fair to say that the city has a role here in terms of the park in an effort to create a unified standard and clarity and unified enforcement is really the impetus behind the suggestion of the overlay and the Secretary of the Interior Standard, correct?
So I don't want to put the words of the Planning Commission, but my interpretation of what happened last month is that in order to have some consistency in terms of the standards, yes, they would use the Secretary of Interior Standards for all three neighborhoods. And Alexandria Circle is already subject to going to the design review board to then have everyone in the park doing the same process. So the park, everyone, all the homes in the park would be going through the same process using the same standards.
Is Alexandria Circle subject to the review board now?
Yes, they are.
So all three communities are subject to that standard?
If this passes, that would be the case, but currently only Alexandria Circle is subject to going before the design review board.
Before the design review board?
Correct. Right now, Alexandria Circle, everything that happens to the exterior in terms of the exterior that is visible from the right-of-way must go before the design review board.
Okay, is that separate from the architectural review for Pearson and the Military Commons or is it the same standard because we have that in our documents?
So I am not sure I understand your question, but let me see if I can try. They are, that is the current process for those homes on Alexander Court and Alexandria Circle because that was the standard that was put in place when they were brought into the city from the VA. You, being you being Green Street, are subject to the development agreement and the HOA documents, which essentially say the city has the ability to approve it or veto it. And that is the case with Pearson right now. But who with the city and the process by which they view that is not clear within those documents. It's just saying the city must approve it as the developer. That's the current process right now.
All right, I fail to see the difference. Is it the same people in this building are reviewing all three?
No. So Pearson and Green are being reviewed by the city, which is an administrative approval. The folks that are sitting over here. Alexandria Circle goes in front of a board.
I see.
So that's the difference. So that is not an administrative approval. They say in front of the design review board, they cause a judicial review board.
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful.
And if I'm not being clear, please tell me.
Oh, no, I think you're trying to be careful, but that creates a lot of clarity. I appreciate that. I would like to state that Military Commons HOA, after a vote of its members, is currently in opposition to the Secretary of Interior Standard for Rehabilitation under the overlay district, and we are petitioning to kill the standard or exclude the Military Commons HOA. I will, of course, share with you why. We won't be having to engage with you on building and understanding the path forward. We are very confident in our joinability to get on a page together, and I'm looking forward to that process. We remain very open to your good intentions. If you don't mind, I have some handouts for you if I can distribute them to the room.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, can I ask a question? Is this person that's been answering on behalf of the commission, and she had hired a consultant by the city, is he sitting there? Who is this person? We don't know who she is.
CT consultants on this stuff.
Our planning zoning consultant for the, basically right now for the zoning ordinance update, but other things I think she worked on.
I thought our HOA has followed.
Is he finished yet?
No, are you finished?
No. I'm sorry, sir, you had a question for me?
What doesn't your HOA group like about other groups? Specifically, is it that easy? I don't know.
Well, if.
Well, they just want to have their group understand what they've been doing for 40 years and they're comfortable with it, and you just need to be educated to know what the other process is. I don't know if they're in conflict or not.
In our perception, they are. We see them as two very different processes. The standard that we've been operating under the last almost 40 years is that a member of the street goes to the HOA, and anything that happens on the exterior has to get an eight out of 10 vote from the street. Documents and plan drawings are created, and then that comes to the city for the review, and the city blesses that document in terms of to protect the city from, you know, painted ladies and this type of thing ending up in the center of the park. The standard that's being applied there is a common sense, prudent standard, right? It's people that care about the park deciding what's the best possible use of resource to get the best possible outcome. The Secretary of the Interior Standard is an exhaustive list that basically shackles what you're capable of doing with the properties. And in fact, the old partner pointed the pamphlet that I passed out, is we haven't been maintaining that standard from the city perspective, or actually, in the case of Alexandria Circle, that's not the standard that the city used to redevelop that back there for public consumption. And that's not a slam on the city at all. The city had to make prudent decisions back there in order for those homes to be marketable. And had they used a Secretary of Interior Standard, which is, hey, there needs to be slate roofs on those homes. You don't. Simply replace the windows with manufactured aluminum windows. You have to restore the windows in place. When you re-tuck point, you have to use historical standards of mortar. Okay. In addition to that, upon researching this on our own, when we found to our insurance carriers and said, hey, what would it take for us to meet the standard in a casualty event? Our property's currently, on average, on the street market at about $700,000. The responses we're getting from our insurance carriers is that you would have to insure the houses for twice the value in order to meet the needs of replacing a home to a historical standard. This is a well-known standard to the insurance, the property and casualty companies, they are key into this issue. And we're not the first community to bump into it. You're esteemed mention, Newport, they bumped into that issue as well. It's well documented, you can Google it. In the event that we adopt the standard, that means that we're going to incur annually as a street $30,000 additional insurance premium to meet that standard. That's a burden of about $3,000 per household if you interpolate that out through the You know, that could be $100,000 worth of impact, although based on what you said earlier, Alexandria Circle may not have an option on that front because they're operating under a different system. But that's a heck of an imposition to ask your constituents to adopt in light of the fact that we have a 40-year standard that has not only worked for the city, it's worked for us. Property values have gone from $80,000 a year to $700,000 a year. This park has never looked better. And the number of enforcement actions that have come from the city for failures of this program are exactly zero. Exactly zero. So my question for you all would be, before you make this recommendation up, what are we gaining from the standard that's worth this level of overlay to constituents? And are we actually shacking ourselves? And I personally believe as a matter of good policy that effective government policy should reflect the reality of what's going to happen on the ground. It should be an attainable standard. If it's not an attainable standard, it's an ideal that's unattainable in a source of conflict, all right? And if you could, I'm going to refer to these documents. These are pictures of the actual standards that are being maintained around the street and/or the park. And I am not here to slam these standards, I actually like these standards. The first thing you'll notice on page one is the wonderful park enclosures that our city has installed. They're gorgeous. We love them. I think the broader community loves them. There's not a darn thing historical about them. They belong in California, right? Now, I'm not suggesting this is wrong. I love this. I'm grateful to the city for it. If you had a role in it, thank you. We flip over page two. I don't think these electrical boxes were here 100 years ago. Page three, this is the museum. I don't think these railings meet the standard. I love the stairs to nowhere. Page four, this is Alexandria Circle. This, and this is probably the biggest issue. I'm not on Alexandria Circle, but I'm going to attempt to do justice for them with these The city did a fabulous job with this. I am sure you saw the decades of eyesore that was back there. And I don't know how Rondell managed to get this accomplished, but I credit him greatly for what occurred back there. But the city was faced with an issue. We can either develop these properties so that people can buy them, or we can go into the hole, buy $10 million to bring the historical standard and then sell them at a loss. What do you think the city did? Well, if you look at page four, those garage structures do not match the homes. They made a best faith effort to mimic as best they could, but those are not the original footprints of the carports that were back there in Fall Over. These are now additions so that they could be patios. It's faux brick over wood, and it's a minimum amount of brick for stone structure, and the rest of it is panel in order to provide a patio. And I'm not here to slam these properties, I would love to own these properties.
Sir, if I might just jump in really quickly, we're going kind of down a path that I don't know that we really need to, in my opinion. Personally, you know, those buildings back there have a different set of standards that are regulated as Elisa had stated very specifically. So those were all regulated and looked at by our VRB, followed those standards. I think, I feel like our Planning Commission recognizes your interest in making some modifications or your interest in not having the, this overlay. I don't know that we need to chase it down this whole, honestly. In the interest of time, I don't think we need to go down that whole person.
Mr. Chairman, we will have our opportunity if the overlay district gets to a trial-like hearing. With all due respect, this has not been a transparent process. We welcome and appreciate the invitation to do this. I think that if you would let us do this, I think it would allow for a more collaborative discussion going forward instead of a very adversarial process at a trial-like planning and engineering in the future. So I appreciate your city staff's comment, but since this has not been a transparent process, if you could just give a little bit of grace to Mr. Hoover to finish so that we don't have a two- or three-hour trial-like hearing in the future that may not even be necessary.
And Steve, I understand what you're saying, and I will say this, I think the points have been made several times and made very well.
Okay, thank you. I will try to be brief. Yeah, I will try to be brief. And just to bring that to a bottom line and not to overkill it to your point, is these were very proven standards in order to get this project done, but Alexandria has not been set up with properties that actually meet the historical standard. And then to enforce a historical standard over the top of that is a recipe for conflict. If you go on into the document, even some of the buildings back there are brand-new, and they were meant to mimic, and they did a great job of that, but there's not a historical standard that you can apply to a modern construction. And finally, there's the question, I think, with this standard is what is the city able to support versus the homeowners? It's not just the homeowners of the park, it's the city as well. And you can see that the Armory and the mess hall are represented in these photos. And I think the city does an amazing job with a very limited budget keeping that park going, but they can't maintain the properties to the same degree that the homeowners can. And so we're basically setting up a scenario, if you will, where there's necessarily going to be a difference in standard between the city and the homeowners, and the city is in the position of enforcing a standard on the homeowners that it can't maintain itself. It can't. And I think that's a recipe for conflict. So I talked to you about the insurance, that's one of the major impediments for us. And just in a final argument so that I can wrap this up for you, I think in short, if we're to sum this up, we think the Interior Secretary's standard of rehabilitation is a solution in need of a problem. We do, however, recognize the city's desire for clarity so that they can fulfill their duties in an even-handed manner, and we'll be happy to collaborate with you on viable I just think we're reaching for a standard that's going to be tough for the city to maintain on its own self, unreasonable task, and it's fixing a problem that doesn't exist. Zero enforcement issues in 40 years, and the park has never looked better. I'm fearful we're creating more problems than we're solving. And sure, thank you very much for your time and your service. I appreciate it. Any other questions for you?
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'll be incredibly brief. Bob Pyle, I'm a property owner at 1538 Alexandria Pike and 1506 Alexandria Pike. I was the original president of the HOA and served far too long in that role, I will tell you, elect for punishment. I sold my home after 30 years last October, very better suite, I will tell you. And I just wanted to reaffirm, so I don't, I'm not a part of the HOA, I don't own property there anymore, but the perspective was, this is probably one of the best P3s I've ever seen without it being structured as a P3. The city and this HOA, we coexisted together in those early years, right? And we looked out for one another. We, you know, what has been described here, you know, when we had Judge, or Mayor Pendry, and we had Jeff Early wine on our board, you know, we were always looking out for what was the best thing for the park. And I will tell you, if I were able to have replaced my windows with replacement windows, I would not have had $1,000 a month gas bills. And we adhered to those standards. And as a third party, I just think, I mean, I can tell you, I researched the Department of Interior Standards, we looked at that in the very beginning, and what it boiled down to was, as long as none of us were receiving federal funds, we didn't have. didn't have to adhere to the Department of Interior standards. If we had, if any one of us had applied for federal funds, we would have had to adhere to those standards both inside and out, and none of us wanted that, which is why we did everything that we did, like slate roofs and double hung wooden windows that are leaky as can be. And through the years, those projects, and I use my backyard, which is actually Commons area, by the way, that I had, built a gorgeous patio back there that has served us very well as a neighborhood, served the city very well. I entertained the Blessed Union of Souls and several other of the bands for merchants of music on that patio. That was a common sense, to Mr. Hoover's point. It was a prudent decision. There was no place for us to have a private area for our neighborhood within that park. And we created it basically in my yard. And so I think the prudent standard of what we have, what they have had in place for 40 years is the appropriate standard. There's no need, to Mr. Hoover's point, it's a solution to a problem. There's never been a problem, so let's not try to fix it. So thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Peggy Masia, 37th South Shaw Lane. I think that, well spoken, all these different perspectives tonight, and I agree that your street is beautiful. I do think that the city has legitimate concern and interest in keeping the floor historically accurate, and it sounds like you all agree with that. I've been asking for a while to, well, I asked for a historic consultant, which the city has not gone, but I do believe it would be prudent to have the historic consultant weigh in on this, perhaps help the homeowners, you know, figure out a way in collaboration as they suggested with the city, what the best ways to go forward to reflect their interest, but also the city's legitimate interest in keeping the floor historically accurate. So I would just ask you to engage the services of the historic consultant, have them come in, have them talk about the ups and the downs and the good and the bad of having a overlay zone back in the floor.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Sharon.
Melanie Powers, 13 Green Street.
You live over here.
You all live over here.
Oh, sorry. Here's a, I guess you could call me a wannabe there, huh? Anyway, there is much I could say. After how long, Elisa? 14 months in working on the zoning ordinance development and changes, it's nice to meet people. I do want to have just one thing I want to say that I'm in disagreement about, and I think it's a little insulting, is the process of all of this has been very transparent, both here with all of you, by the design review board, city council, and then the monthly so-called coffee and conversations with Elisa that are open to the public, have been on Facebook, all kinds of areas. So I vehemently disagree with that, you know, insulted for all of you and the city and insulted for those of us that have worked really, really hard and learned a lot about zoning from the patience and kindness of Elisa. Also, I want to comment that if you have any questions about what transpired in Newport, I also disagree about some of the statements made by the Green Street resident, Mr. Magerly. I can put you in touch, or you yourself can contact Scott Clark. He is the head of Newport's Historic Preservation. They are going forward with Buena Vista, and he may even come and do a presentation to you about that process. Also Beth Johnson, who is the head of the Cincinnati Preservation Association, very large, well-known throughout the Midwest organization, spoke at one of their last meetings giving reasons why, from her very educated professional viewpoint, such a district and incorporating historical guidelines and regulations is a very positive thing for all the residents and for the city. The only other thing which I've spoken to you in the past about is that I think the historical overlay is a wonderful thing and can only serve to be more efficient with the government and the administration here. So we have one unifying standard of regulations. The, any HOA is only as good as its members, is only as informed as its members are. There's no one on Green Street who was a historic preservationist. There have been areas which are visible right now, if you want to walk down there. The Secretary of the Interior's guidelines are actually not overly impressive in any Again, that's a debatable thing. I don't want to waste time on that, but Green Street, Pearson's already been following them, they're not at all restrictive. In fact, for someone like myself who's really an avid lover of historic architecture and deserts, I think they're a bit loose and they could be strengthened. So they're a good starting point. I agree with the members of residents, excuse me, of Green Street who have talked about not having an adversarial sort of relationship. I definitely agree with that and approve of that, and I actually think that our historic overlay will lend itself to that development. We can all work together with that. The HOA can still exist and be very, sorry, what's the word I'm picking up here, mutually inclusive with the Secretary of the Interior's regulations. Also, lastly, I want to say that Elisa Duffy Rogers is an absolute expert about zoning and developing something like this, historic overlay. Everyone who has been attending these coffee and conversations, Wes Cunningham, who you know has recently been hired by the city on a per diem basis as a historic preservation, has nothing but very impressive things to say about the overlay. So on that, I would like to echo Peggy's request that he be brought in to talk about this. In addition, Friends of Tower Park is, has retained, as an organization I'm involved with, to preserve history and the environment at Tower Park. We have retained an attorney named Tom Breidenstein, if I'm saying his name right. He is a specialist also in zoning and is the head of the Historic Commission in Glendale, Ohio. So we are asking him to come and do a presentation. But at this point, I'd like to again emphasize that Friends of Tower Park and also myself as a resident of Tower Park strongly urge you to continue to suggest and recommend to city council that the historic overlay be continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? It was my understanding when the city got Tower Park, they had no intention of being landlords. It was their intention to fix up those houses so the exteriors are done, more or less matched, and then sell them, which is what happened. I thought that all those deeds had deed restrictions in them, that the exteriors were not to be, not to be changed, and that was supposed to be adhered to, but the city did not, I mean, they didn't want to be landlords, but they did want to preserve that integrity of those neighborhoods. Tonight, yes, we've heard people on both sides discuss the department standards, and I think we have some legal work with Tim to look at before we make any kind of decisions on that. We will not be making any decisions on that tonight, but we did hear what you have to say. We obviously will talk to Elisa and Tim about, you know, what the ramifications of those decisions are. And again, we are not the decision-making body on the zoning, planning and zoning, on the zoning ordinance. So I appreciate your comments, and I think they've all been noted. And the only troubling thing, I appreciate your comments about transparency. We're a city of 17,000, 18,000 people. We try to be as transparent as possible in these, in these meetings that we don't have to, that we don't make decisions. I don't think we're required to take public comment, but we always take public comment. We can't notify all 18,000 people individually about the meetings we have. There is, there is a responsibility, being a citizen, of being informed and coming to those meetings when they affect not just you, but the whole city. I appreciate the folks, you, some of you folks might not believe it, but I appreciate the fact that you're here and you care about what's going on in the street. We're bound by some different rules than you are. There are certain things we can and can't do, and I don't know that you fully understand, you know, where we're coming from. But, you know, we will take your comments into account. We will talk to city council about them because I think some of these definitely city council needs to be aware of because they're the ones making the ultimate decision. So with that, I'd like to close public comment and move on to our zoning ordinance update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, just to make sure, I had asked Kevin before, and he said we could take various aspects, like the people you know that are interested in CBD, that we would be able to talk as usual. Is that okay with you?
I think the obvious, obvious priority is that.
Okay. We just want to make sure we're doing it right because I don't know, I signed up and I didn't know when I.
Some water, yeah, water.
Thanks.
Elisa?
So good evening, and thank you very much for having Robert Seitzinger and I here this evening, and Robert is also with CT. So tonight, we will quickly run through the zoning ordinance update process. I will give a summary of the comments that I heard during the coffee and conversation sessions in March. We will review selected topics from the sign regulations and will only be highlighting the significant changes from phase two or those sign topics that we identified in phase two as needing more discussion. We will consider the committee comments on the identified development ordinance that we did not finish discussing in March, and we will end with next steps. So the zoning ordinance update is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase included an analysis of the existing conditions as well as a thorough examination of the existing zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinances. At the end of that phase, we do produce a diagnostic report, which is on the city's website. Phase two included creating the revised regulations. The major changes from the current code were fleshed out, and we concluded phase two in September of '23. All of the phase two drafts were compiled into a single document, and that is available on the city's website. The phase two document shows how the updated regulations differ from the city's existing regulations in terms of zoning and subdivision. In phase three, we will complete all of the amendments and align the zoning map with the new zoning districts. We started phase three in January and it concludes, excuse me, concludes tonight. The phase three draft of the revised zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance is also available on the city's website, and this draft indicates how the phase three draft differs from the phase two draft. Phase four includes the adoption of the new zoning ordinance and map. During phase three, on the Thursday after the planning commission meetings, we held coffee and conversations at Fort Thomas Coffee. At the planning commission the following month, I reported out to the planning commission the comments and the questions that I heard at the coffee and conversation. There will not be a coffee and conversation tomorrow, April 18th. We anticipate that the next coffee and conversation will be held on June 20th. At the community engagement sessions on March 21st, approximately 10 community members attended, and we discussed the following topics. We discussed the short-term rental regulations, including the existing regulations and the proposed one. We discussed the maximum building width in the central business district, which we will discuss in greater depth later on this evening. We discussed in the Alexandria Pike and McShuse district, proposed maximum height of 40 feet, as well as permitting residential uses over non-residential uses. The proposed setback in the central business district, how town center supporting set zoning district was discussed, and that will also be discussed later on this evening. The proposed Tower Park historic overlay district was discussed specifically, including all homes in the park being included in the overlay district. And one community member that attended did not want the Green Street to be included in Tower Park overlay. And then we discussed the parking in the midway, including off-street parking for businesses and the unloading, unloading that is occurring in the right-of-way. And concerns were expressed about the lack of parking and the safety of pedestrians and particular traffic. In addition, community members also discussed their frustrations with the lack of wayfinding signage in terms of finding parking in the midway. So we're going to conduct this meeting a little differently. During the first phase of the meeting, I will introduce the topics. The planning commission will have an opportunity to analyze the issues and ask questions that they may have. Then the community will have an opportunity to weigh in with their comments, and then we'll bring it back to the commission to deliberate. So that's a little bit of a different change of process. Any questions about how we're going to do it a little bit differently? So we will start with the sign regulations, as with the other sections we have reviewed during phase three. As I said a few moments ago, we're just really identifying the changes from phase two and discussing topics that we identified in phase two that need additional discussion. So as we discussed previously, any effective sign regulations must accommodate a multiple of distinct priorities, and it is always a balancing act when you're talking about sign regulations. For example, we're balancing all the constitutional First Amendment issues, which are numerous, with residents' concerns about too much signage, and then the businesses need to find, for identification, so the businesses can find them. There are so many factors to consider when we're regulating signs. As we discussed in phase two, the height of freestanding signage in the central business district has been reduced from 10 feet to 6 feet for both the midway and town center. And then you should be aware that ground signs are not permitted on-site when the building is set back less than 10 feet. 10 feet is your current height for signage in the central business district, but after the discussions with the planning commission, they'll want to reduce that to six. As we talked about last May about signs, it was pointed out that we were permitting additional signage for some of the parcels along Alexandria Pike, but there were several parcels in the area of Highland and Grand that also needed additional signage. As a result, one ground or pylon sign that may not exceed 200 square feet with a maximum height of 20 feet, as long as it's identifying a commercial area that has multiple uses, is permitted. The standards for that include that the entrance must be from the arterial street. As I said, there must be multiple uses on the site, and the building lot must be more than an acre, an acre and a quarter, to be example. So which means that smaller parts of parcels would not be allowed to have this increased signage like this currently exists, or Cobblestone used to be. And I apologize, I've forgotten the name of the restaurant. I should point out that one electronic message center also that is integral to the sign would also be permitted, provided that it occupies new more than 50% of the sign. Other regulations for the electronic message center include that it must be 450 feet for any residential zoning district and can only operate from 6:00 AM till 11:00 PM. So when we get back to the section that we will, where we will be discussing, you know, we'll be deliberating, we will be asking, is it appropriate, again, to decrease the height of freestanding signs in downtown midway, and then also to allow additional signage on Highland and Grand? So before I move to the next topic, do you have any discussions about those two issues?
Let's move that one.
Okay. Awesome. So based on the feedback that we heard during phase two, all ground signs will be prohibited in the R3 district. The existing ground signs, like you see on the screen, exist. the screen, exist and don't have to be removed as a result of this. Just no new signs will be permitted. Please consider if you have any concerns with this prohibition. I do want to point out to you that a non-conforming sign can be, has to be removed, and significant modifications or replacements only have to happen in the following situations: when fifty percent or more of the signs are taken down or destroyed, or when the use that the non-conforming sign is accessory to has been vacant for under eighty days. So the reason I'm telling you that is those signs are going to continue to exist.
Yeah.
Okay, here's the big topic. During, yeah, during Phase Two, in February, we had quite a bit of discussion about electronic message centers for conditional uses in residential districts. We didn't conclude this discussion in February, and in fact, several planning commissioners suggested the city council maybe wish to weigh in on this issue, which they will do in May. But I do anticipate the city council would probably like for you to conclude your discussion, so that we can provide that to them when they need in May. As we discussed previously, the regulations for digital signs in residential zoning districts were enacted in two thousand and seventeen. Most of the city's institutional uses, be it schools or churches, are located in residential zoning districts, and that's important for me to know. When these regulations were adopted in two thousand and seventeen, the electronic signs were permitted for public and curricular schools only. And the current zoning ordinance defines curricular schools as an institution or a place of instruction or education belonging to and being maintained by a religious organization. And that's the existing language for a curricular school. In terms of what can be regulated for an electronic message center, we can specify in what zoning districts they're permitted. We can limit them to only certain types of signs, whether it's a wall sign or a freestanding sign. We can say what percentage of the sign can have digital content. We can regulate the message whole time, and the type of permissible transitions, and we can also stipulate brightness and legibility. And that's it. Your current regulations, as I said, that were adopted in two thousand and seventeen, you know, as I said, were only allowed for curricular and private schools, but never forget that public schools are exempt from zoning. So no matter what you decide, they're going to be allowed to have them. The existing regulations limit to forty square feet per side and ten feet in height for monument signs. They are limited to hours of operation between six a.m. and eleven p.m. They can't glare on residentially used properties. They have to be set at five feet from all property lines, and they must be landscaped. If there are malfunctions inside, they have to be cured within twenty-four hours. Only seventy-five percent of the permitted sign area may be digital. The message whole time is ten seconds with no movement, and the maximum brightness level is twelve-foot candles with a dimmer control and a photocell which monitors ambient light, and the display interval change must be three seconds or less. So these are your existing regulations today. In Phase Two, we proposed permitting electronic message centers for all community facilities and institutions, which includes the things that you see on the screen: places of worship, parks, schools, daycare centers, not just public and private schools. In Phase Two, we retained much of your existing regulations for digital signs, but we did further restrict the booting of displays and specifically prohibit audio devices. Based on the Phase Two discussions, we did make additional changes in Phase Three. The electronic message centers are now conditional uses within the residential districts. We changed the operating time from six a.m. to eleven p.m. to six a.m. to nine thirty p.m. We prohibited existing non-conforming freestanding signs from installing electronic message centers, and we authorized the BOA to reduce the hours of operation in order to have compatibility with residential uses. And the way that we're allowed to do that is because it's a conditional use, and all conditional uses have to go to the board adjustment. When we talked in Phase Two back in February, there were concerns expressed about the potential number of electronic message centers along Fort Thomas Avenue, especially considering the number of institutions. So as you see here, and there's also this right there, if you want to not grab it, we created a snippet which shows a lot of occupied institutional uses along Fort Thomas Avenue. There are a possibility of approximately fourteen digital signs along Fort Thomas Avenue from Inferna to Alexandria Pike. Two of these electronic signs are actually located in the central business district, not a residential district. One currently has a digital sign, which is the city building. The other institution that would be permissible to have in the central business district is the education building, which, again, is exempt from zoning. So when we come back to this in a few minutes, the questions for you to consider, you know, are we right to have them in residential districts as a conditional use, or should it be by or by? As I said, keep in mind, public school is going to have them one way or the other. The larger question is, should we permit them at all? And then what institutions besides public schools should be permitted to have an electronic message center? And are there any other restrictions needed if you decide that they're permissible? And the one that I placed on the screen is, perhaps they're not permitted along Fort Thomas Avenue. So for example, if it was a church located on US twenty-seven, then we'd be allowed to have one. So before we move on, any questions about those, all of the issues surrounding electronic message centers before we move on? And again, you'll have an opportunity to further discuss this after the public administration talk.
It was my understanding none of us were really in favor of electronic message signs in the residential areas, and especially along the avenue. Is that, that's not the decision, I'm just saying.
And the schools, though, they can have them, and we can't regulate anything on them whatsoever.
No. I have been told, but this is about as far into hearsay as you get, that, you know, if you have regulations, they'd like to try to apply by them. But, in terms of, you know, if we change the operating time from six a.m. to eleven p.m. to six a.m. to nine thirty p.m., they might go along with that. But, they don't have to. So...
They want to be good citizens.
They want to be good citizens.
They've always, whenever they've had any kind of project, they've always put an drum that says, "For our common, you know, they didn't have to follow our comments." They've always done that. They're good neighbors.
And that exemption does not come from us, it comes from the state. So, absolutely not a big deal about that.
I think one of our issues is that the Supreme Court's told us we can't really do anything with the message. So the minute we allow a sign there, we've kind of given them carte blanche to say anything they want to offer. So, yeah, and that, you know, it seemed better not to allow the sign than just to keep something in that position.
But that's true whether it's a digital sign or it's a traditional sign. Contract mentality is there.
Too many signs in general.
Well, again, we do have a balance.
Go to McDonald's, and the ladies, and whatever, you see, you know, you regulate this kind of thing, and what do they do? They face things all the windows.
So keep in mind that we are regulating window sign initiatives, which is a enforcement nightmare, I'm going to be honest about it. But we are doing it because of that, because they just plaster all of their windows with signage.
And, I mean, one of the things is, you know, some of our discussions have been, we want to be business-friendly, we want to get businesses here, we want them to succeed. And, I mean, if we prohibit them from having signs, what are we going to have?
Yeah.
What's that?
Revival.
Doesn't apply after a while.
I understand, but, I mean, you know, you're still, you know, business is going to need a sign. I mean, it's the same way with our parking. I mean, we're regulating out parking, and, you know, is that business-friendly? I don't think so, but, you know, we want to, we're doing it for the community. So, I mean, if we, if we want to maintain what we've had, you know, I think we, just like you said, and I did, ban them completely. Not just on Fort Thomas Avenue, but that, ban electronic signs from everybody we can. We can stop the schools from having them. Ban them altogether, that people put up traditional signs. We can regulate the size of those, and we can shrink them, and whatever we can do.
One high-end sign, we've got to care for in the central business.
I don't disagree, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, if we don't like them, I mean, why allow them anywhere?
I agree.
Do I, do I want them here?
So a few more signs on slides, a few more slides on signs, before we open it up to public comment. So when we discussed temporary signs in Phase Two, we heard a large number of concerns about the signs that are erected in yards, particularly residential yards. For single-family, detached, two-family, and attached single-family, we have added a duration of not to exceed sixty days. Most of that discussion centered around how bad a sign can look if it's up for a long time. So the question before you is, should this duration limit be allowed per calendar year, for, you know, for each sign? But I do want to point something out to you. As you see on the slide, please keep in mind that many homeowners in Fort Thomas keep their temporary signs in their front yards for the entire school year. I'm sorry.
Or longer.
Or longer. I heard someone...
High school career.
Yes, not higher high school career.
Yeah.
So, so we did put in this, or, you know, we had maintenance standards for temporary signs before, in Phase Two. In Phase Three, we have added a clause that says, well, you don't need a permit, that they have to be maintained, and have to be maintained according to these standards. And so that, having inserted that phrase, where you have is the table, so that people are notified that this is what they have to do, and this is how you have to maintain your sign. So I would throw out to you that, given the historical practice in this community for single-family and two-family, that we don't limit the duration at all. So, it just fall onto being that it has to be maintained. I would point out to you that we don't require currently or in the draft regulations, a sign permit. So, you know, these are going to be situations where someone puts this up there, there's a freshman, they become a freshman, and it stays up until they graduate, and they don't need a permit to do that.
How do we educate them, what you're going to keep in the sign, right? They're not even going to come up there and answer. Unless, maybe they three bucks see that from that.
So it's, yeah, so it's in the ordinance, you know, it's there, they go look. We'll have conversations about, you know, how this is actually going to be codified, and where it's going to be codified at the end of this. And codified meaning where it's placed together and how it's put on the web, okay? We may, currently, it's a PDF that you just sort of have to, you know, search to find anything. Hopefully, you can have a situation where someone does actually go to look, they can search, you know, through a qualification service, whether it's American Legal, or Meaning Code, or some of those kinds of things. But you're right, it is only...
They never made the phrase, or something, never gave a thought to.
Never gave a thought to it.
Standard, what, bring water or something, like all the elections are going to be.
But if at some point...
You go off of it, and same, you get them down, and we're going for fifteen, and just down the middle of town, and all that stuff, same thing.
But if it does become an issue, we are regulating the size, and they have to be maintained. And so at that point, that gives Kevin and Mark the opportunity to then say, you know, if someone plasters ten signs across their front yard, you want to have the ability to regulate that in some way. And so that is regulated. The question is, for the person who has played, you know, Highland High School or played for the Bluebird, do we really want to put a duration on them?
Will we have them maximized if we don't regulate? Some things that want to be managed.
So what do the draft regulations say? For single-family, you're allowed a maximum of sixteen square feet of temporary signage per lot. The number is unlimited, so they could have, for example, four. And then the maximum height for a freestanding temporary sign is four feet. So they could potentially, and the reason that you do that is there have been cases where you want to allow members of the household, who may have different opinions, to express themselves on-site.
You've been to my house.
Maybe it's their first, we guess.
Yes. So, so I did not just do that without forethought. So that is why there's an unlimited number, but a maximum size.
Alyssa, if you've got a two-sided sign, does that count as two-sign?
No, it counts as one. And the way that that's defined is you can only, from how you can see it, right? So it only counts as one. Good question.
But we regulate them regardless of the size, the size of the sign.
The size, it can be, the number of signs can only total a maximum of sixteen square feet. So we don't, again, we'll have an opportunity to sort of decide what's in the...
I know some of them are never safe, you just have like a little sign, like in or an outside, they don't really regulate it if it's under a certain size.
So we do actually do that for ours for the commercial signage in this draft. So we're just specifically talking about temporary signs.
But we don't do that.
No, we don't.
I'm afraid that Bluebird's sign is something that we would regulate.
Right. And rationale behind that is, I'm going to show my age, we're trying to deal with, you know, the berm-shape signs, and, you know, there's people who put ten in their front yard for whatever reason. So that's the reason for the regulation. And again, it just is teeth for Kevin and Mark at some point if there's a good number of signs in their front yard.
This is basically complaint-driven, Kevin, Mark? I mean, you're not driving around town.
No, not really. I mean, if we do see, most of the signs that we see are public driveway signs that we're yanking all the time. But short of that, there's not really a major problem with it. You know, around the political season, it gets a little, you know, intense at times, but...
We can't regulate that, though, can we?
We can't regulate the content, so it's not a political sign, it's a sign. So, we're trying to regulate that by, like Alyssa pointed out.
I like the product, pray Bluebird's sign, size. You know, I don't care what you call it, so much. Maybe no more than two in your yard, you know?
That's kind of what we...
You can hang up a large skeleton on Allen Avenue.
That's fine, that's fine.
I've been threatening to tear down, but that's like somebody's art.
I mean, are you guys comfortable with the sixteen square foot? I mean, then you obviously don't, maybe not.
I think it's smaller, just like, it'd make it easier for you that people want to walk in, do all this, just do that standard size. Community yards, you know, you can get them all swirled, pasted, your elephant balls, stuff, hand-drawn, whatever. I don't think you ever get them to make a sign like that. They're cheaper when they're smaller.
But again, we need to have enough leeway in the amount that's allowed to allow more than one voice to speak in my yard.
Your real question about duration, right?
Yeah, questions about duration. And so, and so, we come back to this in a few minutes after the community statement, what we can sort of conclude about. But I think we do really want to think about, given the practice in the community, just not having the duration.
Okay, well, I mean, how long do we, how do we know that that's been there? I mean, if it's been there five years, I guess we know it.
Well, we know it pretty well.
Three months, or more, I'm sure.
Kevin's smarter than I am. I'm trying to figure out how long that, that will be.
That's correct. That's why she was saying to you.
Well, it's hard to regulate the duration anyway. So if you tell somebody to dig down, they dig down for a day, two days, and you can really always start all over the process. So it's hard to really put duration on something like that. I think the better way to do that is by size.
You all agree with that?
Well, we'll come back and sort of...
All right.
So let's turn, this is a little, this is a little trickier. So let's turn to temporary signs for non-residential uses in residential districts, such as churches and schools and daycares and those kinds of things. So we added, again, based on the conversations that we had during Phase Two, a duration of sixty days. And what we, I did not specify, was that applied, you know, you only allow sixty, sixty days per calendar year, or each sign is only up for sixty days? I mean, what does duration mean in that? Or perhaps, it should be, the duration should be per temporary sign, but shortened to thirty days, right?
But that, I mean, you could change, mark something on it, you've changed the sign, you've got another thirty days.
And that's for sign they write. Or they can pull it out for a day and put it back.
It seems to me a duration has to be... It seems to me a duration has to be per something in order to have any teeth to it, if we want that.
I mean, I think it has to have, I mean, and which is why I'm asking this question. You know, we have places of worship who do everything from vacation Bible school to spaghetti suburbs to, and have all of those types of things. And those things happen all year long. And so to just say that you can only have a temporary sign up for 60 days per year is the definition of an enforcement nightmare. And that doesn't give them the opportunity to advertise all the types of temporary activities that they do throughout the year. So again, you know, we may want to say, or you may want to say, you know, it's 30 days per sign. And if it becomes a regulation, you know, an enforcement issue, Kevin and Mark can drive by and take a picture, and then 31 days from the time they take that picture, they can say, you can come down. I'm just throwing that out there as another way of handling this issue. Any other questions? So like electronic message centers, we had quite a bit of discussion about murals in Phase Two, and we deferred all discussions until Phase Three. Murals are very complicated to regulate, and perhaps more deliberation than is possible during this update is needed before the mural regulations are placed in the UDO. And if it's the planning conditions desire, we certainly can forego regulating murals during this update. So I'll run through quickly what's currently in the draft. So the proposed standards in the draft UDO only permit murals in the central business district, so that would be downtown and midway. The mural can't exceed the height or width of the structure that is hosting it. It can't project more than six inches from the wall. It can't block windows, doors, or vents, or other building openings. It can't have electrical, mechanical components or changing images, meaning no whirly gigs and those kinds of things. It can't cover, destroy, or materially alter a distinctive architectural feature of the building or the structure. It can't produce a light intensity of greater than three-foot candles at the nearest commercial property line, or one-foot candle at the nearest residential use property. And they have to be maintained and coated with clear sealant.
You know, I'm wondering if they're just big signs, right?
Well, um-
I'm trying to say, you can't have a mural. We have one in town, but I know on the side of Old Crocker Building, with the tower.
Oh, we have one that I'm aware of in downtown that's on the side of the- Yeah, right. So what I would-
That I'm aware of, I think.
It's the one I know of.
I don't know that one, but yeah.
They didn't almost regulate it, so just or they just paint it. But they did a city work at a substance.
No, I know that, but did they even ask anybody about it? They just did it.
It was the city's birthday.
Yes.
Well, I know that, but whoever did it did a good job, but they just do it.
I think so.
Well, they weren't regular, but they did it on-
And no one, and it's happened several times how it happened, in different contexts, and no one's there with talent. So I don't miss-
Nighttime radio.
Somebody with flashlights. So, you know, the first question before you is should they be regulated in the UDO at this time, right now? If so, should they be in the sign regulations or be classified as an accessory use? If you ask me my recommendation, if you decide to regulate them now, I think we need to move them out of the sign regulations and put them as an accessory use. Then in what zoning districts? Should they be limited to downtown and midway, or should it be allowed in the Alexandria Pike mix use district or the American Commercial Office District? And then should they be, you know, if you decide you want to do them, should it be a conditional or restricted use? Given the level of scrutiny needed for a mural, regulating them as a conditional use would be most appropriate, because that would give the opportunity for it to go in front of the Board of Adjustments, and they can review it in terms of the quality of its design, make sure it meets the standards. If it's, you know, cheap by jow to a residential use, say, as a condition of disapproval, you can have no elimination. You know, those kinds of things, they're complicated, and that would be an opportunity for the B O A to then be able to have good, a good discussion about it, understand what they're proposing, and place necessary conditions.
Three paintings fall in the same thing as a mural?
What do you mean by-
Shouldn't they have their Black Lives Matter photo by the same building?
Yeah, like on the street?
Yeah, painted around the street, yeah.
So that's right of way in the-
You don't want that to happen.
Well, it's your right of way, and you can decide what you want to do within it, because like schools, you're exempt.
It's in the same category as a mural.
Well, again, it's in the right of way, so, you know, they can do what they want. And a mural by definition is usually on the building, not a street. But yes, it is very much the same sort of artistic expression.
Could do the same thing and make a conditional thing with it, come to somewhere.
Again, you-
Content and size and all that.
Well, again, if it's on the right of way, zoning typically only handles property, not the street.
Well, the city would see it, that's what we want.
Well, the city would, we wouldn't allow that on the street, and it would be prompted by us.
Like. The only time it's not the right of way would be if it's a transportation-
You're across that one over there, and it kind of, kind of takes away from like crosswalks and things like that.
The city, the city put it in, Dan, so that, I mean, that doesn't-
Well, I know, well, they got it there, but I'm just saying-
But I'm saying, we can't, we can't regulate that here.
Well, I'm just saying, from a visual standpoint, you really don't want that, like what Kevin's saying, we don't really, we don't want anybody to paint the street. And why, because it is a visual distraction.
But what we're doing here isn't, we can't regulate the city on what gets up-
No, I know, but I'm saying, we just want to make sure that like a mural, they can go to Kevin, and he could say, he could plus content and size and write history of that if you really want to go to that. Or you just say, that shall not happen.
You said, that shall not happen, but at the very least, I don't often give you what my recommendations, but in this case I would. It needs to be a conditional use. Because it needs to have, it needs to go and have them evaluated in places that are conditional.
On what basis do they evaluate? I mean, are they hard critics? And it seems like there might be some behind that. I mean, you have to have a fine impact of why you would approve it or why you wouldn't, and you could open up a whole campers legally about-
But they're not meant that, they're really not going to be regulating content so much in terms of, they will be regulating things like lighting. They would be saying, well, it can't be lit because it's next door to residential on this property. They might say, for example, it was on, you know, a particularly short building. You can't do this, you can't, whatever. I mean, give them an opportunity to review it. So anyway.
I was thinking, that building, I think, that's a good idea.
And Martin Draxton's saying it doesn't help.
Yes. But again, I mean, I think, as I started this whole discussion, they're very complicated legally. And it may be that, given the context of this update, that this is something that gets hunted.
Alyssa, I did not have an opportunity to look into that today, regarding, really the issue of if you just say no, the legal challenge is to that. Have you, have you encountered situations where cities have said, no murals?
Sure, I mean, I mean, we can do one of two things. We can specifically prohibit it, define it prohibited. Or we can, you know, fall to the basic parameter, which is if it's not expressly permitted, it's prohibited. Either approach works.
Okay.
There's no other discussion? So the final question for us to consider is should the Design Review Board be given the authority to grant waivers to the standards and requirements in the sign regulations? Variants, so this is a sort of very technical conversation that we're about to have. And this, that's a tricky one. Variances are permitted for signage that does not meet the dimensional standards, which are eligible for a variance under KRS 100. As we've talked about many times, variances are very specifically defined in Kentucky, and only things that are number-based can seek a variance. So things like sign area, sign height, sign setback. But a variance cannot be used for non-dimensional regulations, such as where you can place a projecting sign on a building, where you can put signage on an awning. So in order to receive any relief from those kinds of requirements, a waiver is your only option. If the commission thinks it's worthwhile to permit a relief, you can dawn the things that you can get a variance for, then authorizing a waiver makes some sense. Then the question becomes, should a variance and a waiver go to two different boards? If not, then all requests can go to the Design Review Board, which may make some sense, because they do have design expertise. And that in no way is meant to diminish the Board of Adjustment. I don't mean that. But it does make, you know, they do have that design expertise. So that's the question in front of you. And again, I apologize for the technical nature behind it.
Why do we want to have waivers available? What type of things are you thinking with that?
So that's what I said, so there are, there are a number of requirements in the sign regulations that wouldn't qualify for a variance. So for example-
Okay, so-
If you have a building that was, that was all window up to like 12 feet, but we had a 12-foot maximum height for a sign, so you could, you could make a case that you don't want to block the window and you want to put a tire on there then. I can see some cases where we want to provide someone relief, but I think it would, it would vary then.
Well, if you open the door, I mean, it sounds like we can, we can either say yes or no to them. If you say yes to them, then, you know, where do we, where do we have them go?
So then, if you say yes to the waiver, you know, they could come here, which is where all the waivers come, or they could go to the Design Review Board, because the Design Review Board does have the, the design expertise on that board. You don't have to say yes, you can just say, you know, only variance is an option. And then if something happens, so the other example I was going to say, you have to, that building is designed such that the projecting sign can't go, go over, or whatever we say. So for example, it's because of how the building is designed, or because there's not an appropriate header to, you know, attach it to, or whatever else may be a problem, then they're just out of luck. But they may, and that may have been your only choice for a sign, because of all of the other signs that's on the building. If you allow a waiver, then they could go to the Board of Adjustment, or to, excuse me, to the Design Review Board. The only other option would be then to ask, you know, Kevin and Mark to, you know, bring a text amendment to you, which would then change the regulation for projecting sign, which is an endless process. But, you know, it's certainly at your discretion. Do you just want to rely on variance? Or do you want to allow a waiver? And then the question becomes, do the, all the variances continue to go to the adjustment, which is where they're, they go right now? And then the waivers go to the DRB? That's certainly appropriate.
I think signs are more an aesthetic design issue, and probably the expertise of the Design Review Board probably is, is better served towards making those decisions.
So, and again, we don't have to, you know, again, you can decide not to do it, but if you do, then the question, if you do, is it the BOA? Or is it the Planning Commission, or is it the Design Review Board? And we are setting up lots of processes. And so the only other thing I would say is it would be easier to deal with if there was only one place where some deviation from the sign regulations could go.
I mean, ideally, we want 98% of them put to Spain or to be set up.
There could be some cases, yeah. There could be some cases where that's just on earth.
So we don't want to get too easy to let them go someplace else and change it.
I would hate to say no, because-
But maybe just start with the, never start with the, you know, I think it makes sense to allow a waiver.
You're saying no, it's a no.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, there's other times, and then the next time, we do a text amendment, we do something to change it, we've had a bunch of reasons too.
And I'm a fan of bright line rules, but until I don't like them.
Yeah, I guess I have to give them a damn.
Chair, I agree with the Design Review Board.
So we'll bring this back in just a few minutes. So at this point, if it's okay with the chair, we would like to open it up to the community members, for them to comment on issues that we discussed before the Planning Commission delivers.
Would anyone like to talk about any of these sign regulation issues?
Do you like if we have one quick question on the signs?
I think they're just in love.
Yeah.
We talked about the, just a few recitals at top one. We talked about the ones that look like, when you go to Myrtle Beach, you see them hanging, they look like, we talked about them at the Copy and Conversations.
Projecting signs, like the top one there?
No, they come down, they do, they're kind of like fabric.
Oh, the center signs?
Yes. Those are being-
Those are prohibited.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to- Those look really bad when you see them around town.
Yeah, yeah, so they are defined, there's even a picture in the, and they are prohibited.
And we're only talking about signs right now, we're not talking about murals?
No, so murals are on the table, as to whether, you know, the largest question is, should they be regulated? I mean, should we entertain these conversations right now about murals?
I mean, I totally agree with what you all said. I mean, we, again, we want to maintain the small character and charm of our town, and I don't think having those types of murals is really what we're looking for. I mean, we were lucky that the one that was done was tasteful and nice and, you know, went to the city, but I just don't think that's what the citizens are looking for, quite honestly, is that kind of situation.
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Just really briefly on electronic signs, when I left the meeting that we discussed this last, it was discussed last time, what I heard, Alyssa, was that there were going to be no electronic signs, except for the schools that already existed, and there's one more parochial school, Fort Thomas. So I was really shocked when I saw it come back up again with all the different variations. And that's what I heard tonight, I heard electronic signs only for the schools. Is that, am I hearing correctly?
Well, they haven't liberated yet.
Okay. And then number two on the murals, I'm always trying to look for evidence, and the most recent evidence we have from a community survey was from Brant Hill. And one of the tough things was it, like, Fort Thomas, the way it is, and we're not like plastered with murals. What I hear these guys saying is no murals, and Alyssa, I keep hearing you bring up, well, let's do it this way, let's do it this way. So I hear the peanut gallery, I heard from Brant Hill, and I'm hearing from these guys, I believe, no more murals.
I think Alyssa's just being devil's advocate, making sure that we understand their, their decision. I don't think she really expresses too many opinions.
I don't mean in any way, just to, so, let's just kill it.
I agree.
Anybody else?
Okay, so I think what I heard previously, and y'all were okay with the signage proposed for Highland and Grant, and decrease in the sign height in the central business district. No concerns about prohibiting ground signs in all three? Okay, here we go. Electronic message centers.
They both say?
I guess I'm hearing everybody, we want to do away with them, and I don't think we, I mean, so parochial schools, we don't have to allow them-
Correct.
-to have them, we can't stop the public school from having them, but, I mean, I guess, if we're going to eliminate them, why not eliminate them across the board, to the state camp?
I think when the St. Thomas one came out, it was no parody issue with our heads.
I agree.
But then, when, but they do publicize church activities on there, and then we can't, once you open the door, you allow them, you can't, you can't say what the message is.
So, you know, I just, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, stop everybody we can stop, and you know, we can't do anything about the rest of them, just kind of my thought.
We all agree on that.
All right. So, pray for Bluebirds. How long? So again, I think we're, you know, given the practice within the community to leave them up for a long period of time, that the duration may not be appropriate.
Correct, as long as they keep them nice and neat.
And again, that is already in the draft.
Yes.
So is the, I guess, the one question I have, the 16 square feet, seems to me that these signs for the most part are two-by-two or smaller, so that, that means we can have four signs up.
Correct.
I mean, is that, is that enough? Is that too many? I mean, do we want to, you know, put it down to 10 feet? And I'm just asking, I'm not a-
On one sign, 16 is not a big, pretty big.
Well, it is, four by four, right? I mean, it is pretty big, but- I mean, it is pretty big, but we're also talking, excuse me, about the combined of however many signs they have up.
Maybe we could put an individual maximum size and then a total, yeah, communal.
And that could be different. It said that the maximum sign size could be three by three and have a total of whatever else. And I'm not sure what's appropriate there, but...
But, yeah, for one single four by four sign, sounds commercial.
Yeah, the good thing, what's the purpose of that sign? Well, it's not advertising the business.
But, I mean, so we're talking about residential areas only, is what we're talking about, not any of the commercial.
Well, I think, what is it, parochial sign?
Well, I mean, somebody came, I mean, we aren't regulating what they can put on.
Well, I'm just saying...
But it could be anything like that. It could be, I hate my neighbor Joe. I mean, we can't regulate that, so it's just a matter of what, how big do we want to allow?
Well, that draws me to attention.
I mean, you're, there is no reason you cannot say, I mean, the maximum sign size is 40 feet, or whatever you saw that to be. Or, you know, you said three by three, you said nine square feet.
Well, and I can, I don't know, I just...
But I would, as I said, we really do have to be careful about limiting it so much that more than one voice can't speak.
Sure, sure.
But two by twos, we allow?
What are the, what are the size of the Pray for Bluebird? I mean, that's smaller than a two by two, isn't it?
About 18 by 24.
Yeah, it's about 18 by 24.
Some standards, that's three square feet.
In a normal, so if you're going to for sale by owner or something else, and those are a little bit bigger, but those aren't three by three, I wouldn't think.
No. Mr. Coffin?
Real estate signs, 24 by 24.
Okay, there's two by two signs.
The typical frame, the middle insert is 24 by 24, the rider is six by 24 that says for sale, sold pending, whatever. There's a rider at the bottom.
So it's nice to have an expert in the eye.
And just a lot of conversation, my gears are going like this, and I'm just going to keep her damn mouth.
I'm just thinking about it, I'm thinking, make the sign, the maximum sign size three by three. And I think, limit it down from 16 square feet per total to something a little less, it would allow at least two. But if you're talking two by two, you know, that would allow, you know, 16 allows four.
Which I think is probably as small as you want to be able to get away with.
The 16? Okay. So I, I would say that one sign couldn't be bigger, like Carrie said, so you don't deal with a four by four, you have a maximum of three by three or something.
Yeah, so I'll put it out, what I've written down is the maximum sign size at nine square feet. I need that in my notes.
And how long are you leaving them up, thirty days?
So that's it, no duration at all. No duration at all for single family individuals. As long as they're maintained. And one of those has been out as long as I've been working in this community. So let's turn to temporary signs for non-residential uses in residential districts. So, again, keep in mind that the maximum size is 20 square feet, so it goes up for obvious reasons. So there are unlimited, the number of signs is unlimited, just limited to 20 square feet. The maximum height is six feet, and then we're talking about duration. And it's slightly different than single-family homes because of the nature of the use. So, you know, I don't, I think 60 days total for a year is too limiting, given, you know, how these uses, these temporary signs are typically used. So, but the question to you is, what should the duration be? Is it 30 days per sign and not a total for the year? What do you want to do?
Per sign, but I don't think that's...
The temporary, right? So they shouldn't be there all year?
Right.
Like that condition?
Correct. But keep in mind, they may have signs that deal with everything from, you know, age levels.
Correct.
You can take it down and put it back up, the two days later, and you've got another time period. I think it's good to have a time period on it. It's a forceful nightmare for Kevin or whatever, but I think we put it in, whatever it should be. I guess I'm leaning toward maybe 30 day per sign.
That's what I was leaning to, but that's going to be a nightmare for them. So then I was thinking 60, but that's a long time to have a sign for vacation Bible school that's only going to be a week.
Right, and you probably want it a week before, or, you know...
They don't have it, it's just too long.
No, correct. So 30 days per sign?
Thirty days.
Okay, got it.
Once again, I think that's, education's going to win the battle of the law.
And there are many communities, you know, who, in addition to have it in someone, that say, put it, like, on their website as the frequently asked questions.
There's probably maybe six people that put signs up all the time, you think about it. And once they get what the rules are, you know, it'll...
All right, murals. Did I hear, just don't deal with it right now?
I think you did, don't deal with the murals. We're not saying, are we saying we don't even want to deal with them, or we're not allowing them?
So that's going to be my next question. So, I mean, because it's two separate questions, right? I mean, we can say, we're going to punt, and we're completely silent, in which case, we fall under the generic rule of that which is not permitted is prohibited. Or we can define them as a use and prohibit them, which is a much stronger language, much stronger statement.
Let's do that.
Okay, define and prohibit?
Prohibit. Somebody comes in, Kevin, he can stand up and say, we don't want those.
Design Review Board?
Yeah, I think we all agree to that.
Okay. DRV reviews everything.
I mean, that probably might not even happen. I think we'd have to make a case that there's something about their building that doesn't allow them to meet the requirements. I doubt they'd get too many cases of that.
And if they are getting a lot of cases, then that's the time for you to look into language. So at this time, we will turn to community comments from various Coffee and Conversation sessions, those of which we do not have time to discuss last month. So with this portion of the meeting, we are going to review the previous community comments, then take additional community input, and then end with deliberations by y'all. So before we go through the community comments, let's review the subzoning districts in both portions of the Central Business District. In downtown or the town center, there was one residential subzoning district, which you see in orange on the screen, and those are the homes on Miller and Lumley, out of Long Place. The supporting subzoning district is the aqua or blue color, and the supporting subzoning district includes all the parcels north of the New Green Line Restaurant and stretches all the way to Forest Avenue. The supporting subzoning district also includes the city building, the strip mall behind West Banco, and the parcel south of the building, players, which, down to the post office. The town center core subzoning district, which includes the historical core of downtown, is the purple that you see on the map. And I'm going to apologize to Mr. Coffin because he's colorblind, so I can apologize for that. And that's one of the reasons that I was very explicit about what they were. There are two residential subzoning districts in the Central Business District and Midway. Those are the Midway Residential One, which is in orange, and those are the shotgun houses on South Fort Thomas and Midway Court. The purple is the Midway Core, excuse me, and the red is the Midway Residential Two, which are those homes along the side streets. The purple is the Midway Core One, which again is the historical and commercial core of the area. The Midway Core Two is the aqua, and is a subzoning district for the other commercial areas in Midway. And then Midway Core Three is the Cincinnati Bell Building, which is not currently part of the Central Business District. The property owner at 17 River Road would like to have his property placed in the same subzoning district as the other parcels that he owns on River Road, which are all in the Midway Core's two subzoning district. The parcel at 17 River Road is currently in the Midway Residential Two Subzoning District, and is the only parcel on River Road in that subzoning district. The requested change would make all five parcels along River Road zoned CBD Midway Core. Many community members have requested that there be a maximum number of stories, not just a maximum height regulation, especially in the core subzoning districts. Currently, the maximum height for all core zoning districts is, except for Midway Core Three, is 40 feet, but there is not a maximum number of stories. And community members have, would like to limit the number of stories to two. There's also a request to reduce the maximum building width regulation in the town center core subzoning district. As drafted, the maximum building width is 185 feet, and that applies to the traditional business district, which is in Burness, the town center core, and the Midway Core One and Two. And so what you see on the bottom is how you measure building width. We've also heard a request that single-family detached dwellings should be permitted by right in the town center supporting subzoning district. The area in blue on the slide is the supporting subzoning district, as I said previously. In the current draft of the UDO, single-family detached dwellings are restricted uses with the restriction that the homes must exist at the time the UDO is enacted. What this restriction means in practicality is that the existing single-family homes are permitted uses, but no new single-family homes can be constructed. This restriction also allows the homes that are currently used as businesses to be converted back to single-family detached dwellings if someone wanted to, which they would not be allowed to do that today. So community members, as I said, have requested that they be permitted by right, which would allow new homes to be constructed. It has been requested that the phrase "critical mass" be removed from the intent statement for the Central Business District and Midway. Currently, it reads to be a fun, entertainment, recreation destination for both residents and visitors while preserving the historic character and integrity of the area, enhancing the traditional mainstream character and enriching the critical mass of retailing excuses and housing. And so they're going to request to remove that phrase "critical mass." Community members have also requested that the step-back provision be removed in the town center core and in the town center supporting subzoning districts only. Upper stories that are stepped back 100 feet from the back of the sidewalk along Fort Thomas would be allowed to exceed the maximum height by 10 feet if it's approved by the Planning Commission and the certificate of appropriateness is given by the Design Review Board. This regulation permits additional building height without impacting the perception of height walking along the sidewalk. Some community members have felt that the proposed 20-foot minimum front step-back in the town center supporting subzoning district, which again is the blue area on the map, is too close to North Fort Thomas Avenue, has drafted the maximum front step-back for the subs, for that particular subzoning district is 35 feet, which means that a building has to be located between 20 feet and 35 feet from the back of the sidewalk along Fort Thomas Avenue. To give you a frame of reference, I have listed a front step-backs along North Fort Thomas from Shune to Forest Avenue, and these are front setbacks that are completely estimates based on lane GIS. The front setbacks range from 17 feet to 76 feet. Some of this variation results from the bend in Fort Thomas Avenue, and other factors contribute, such as the type of the building, when it was constructed, and the location of the building.
Just so I understand, the measurements you're giving, it's another estimate? That's from the sidewalk, not from the street?
So I am, what I gave you here is from the front of that building to the lot line as it is shown in lane GIS.
Okay, and is that lot line, as far as you know, is that the sidewalk or the street?
So, you know, it can vary. In some cases, it may be a foot behind the sidewalk. In other places, it appears to be right at the sidewalk. And the reason that we use the step-back, typically, as you know, front setbacks are done from the front lot line, but because there is such variation along, in the lot line and parcel line along Fort Thomas Avenue, a decision was made to measure step-back from the back of the sidewalk in order to have some consistency. But I was working with the limitations of lane GIS.
Okay, I just, yeah.
And so what that does is measure the front step-back using their measurement tool from the front of that building to the front lot line. So again...
Where are those?
This is an estimate.
Right, to show us.
This is to show you some, to give you a frame of reference. On the other side of the street, the front setbacks range from approximately 26 feet for the city building to 42 feet for the post office. The build-two zone that is created by these minimum and maximum setbacks is really designed to account for the variation in setbacks throughout the supporting area. In addition, the purpose of any build-two zone, whether it's in this zoning code or another one, is to create a specific effect in the public round. If y'all remember, the public round is, okay, no. In the supporting subzoning district, we have understood that the desired effect is to be less intense than the core subzoning district. And in order to do that, to move the buildings further back, but to not make them so much further back that they don't appropriately frame the street. So that's where those numbers come from. And when we're talking about framing the public round, we're talking about the pedestrian experience as you walk along the sidewalk. And as you move a building further back from the sidewalk, it is less able to frame the public round and becomes less effective for us. So that is where that, these numbers come from. When we're looking at buildings today that are, you know, at 17 feet, which is one of the houses that you see, the doors taking them all the way to 76 feet, that is the Third Bank, which you know, you're walking along the sidewalk, that building has no reference to the street at all, at all. So certainly, you know, we could move that number from 20 feet to 25 feet for the model, but, you know, I wouldn't recommend moving further than that. The final two community comments are outside of the Central Business District. Some community members have questioned the appropriateness of including intent statements for zoning districts in the UDO. The intent statements really do provide a justification for regulations and explain the why behind the zoning districts. When the Planning Commission and sometimes the City Council are making certain decisions, it's helpful to understand the purpose of the zoning district. And then some community members have also requested the removal of all references to the community plan in the UDO. In some cases, the UDO mentions the comprehensive plan as a factor when making some decisions, such as when the Planning Commission is considering waivers. And in other statements, the intent statements are taken directly from the community plan. That's where they came from, and then were recorded into the UDO. It should be noted that Harris 100 requires consideration of the community, of the adopted conference of plan when the Planning Commission and the City Council is considering the zoning map amendment. So you should be aware of those things. Is there any comment from y'all on those things before we open it up to the community?
Anyone, do they like to address any of those issues?
Thank you. My name is Sharon McKnight, 62 Miller Lane. First of all, I want to say thank you for changing the order up and allowing the community input first before, before any kind of decisions made professionally or not. Also, I appreciate the agenda as well. It's easy to follow, and I can understand it. So thank you very much, I appreciate that. Also, on the height, I think 35 feet is good for the central business districts. That's the character of the town, even if it's set back. I don't think we should allow it any higher than that. And one of the big reasons is because you butt up against residential no matter what. So if you're pushing it back, so you're, you have a closer to the residents, and they, so they have the tallness, you know? So I think if you just keep the height, 35 feet, I think that's just a good look for Fort Thomas in keeping the small-town feel, you know? No matter how far back it sits. I also appreciate allowing the buildings to be switched back to residential, single-family. That way, you do, you know, then you naturally have a little more, you have more people there. there to help it, and you don't have to tear anything down and rebuild it and change it. You just naturally switch it back to a residential, because the charm is still maintained that way. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
For starters, I have to share, and thank you very much for changing the format, letting us talk before you do your deliberations. It's really helpful. And secondly, thanks for letting us talk at all. I agree, Jerry. I understand that you guys don't have to let us do that, so I appreciate you allowing this community input. I want to let you know that we talked to a lot of people on the outside, and we don't encourage, you know, like, five hundred people to show up for these meetings. So sometimes I think we're talking for people who are, express a lot of concerns to us. So I'm just going down this list really quickly. The two stories, again, we talked about the brand shoe. Let's keep Fort Thomas as it is. Last time, Tiffany talked to you about the survey that was done in two thousand and sixteen. Only twenty-six percent wanted more residential in the business districts, only thirty-three percent wanted increased density. Somehow, it still didn't make it into the comprehensive plan, so I wasn't involved then. But if we look at what the, so we're talking about the C B D right now, what the C B D looks like, if you just go out and look, the vast majority of the buildings are two stories. So if we're going to keep Fort Thomas the way it is, we're going to keep that character and charm. I would ask you to seriously consider doing two stories. When we bring more density, when we bring three stories and bring more density in, we're setting up two problems. Problem number one is we're already at a conflict with the Design Review Guidelines. The Design Review Guidelines talk about having replacement buildings, which we're going to have at some point, that are the same height, the same setback, the same massing. So if we deviate from what we have, then we're going to set up a conflict right there and then. So secondly, let's talk about the one hundred and eighty-five-foot buildings. It's the width of One Highland. That's proposed for this east side of the street. If you look at what we have now, it kind of, you kind of get that feeling, but it's not what we have. What we have are individual buildings, and those individual buildings have kind of really cool character. We have character all the way from the turn of the century to stuff going on in the fifties, the seventies. So we have different buildings. All the buildings, except for three, have spaces in between them. It's hard to see if you're just driving down the street, but if you're walking in, you can see it. So if we're going to maintain that small-town character and charm, eighty-five percent of the people in the two thousand and sixteen surveys said they wanted to do that, I would ask you to please take that one hundred and eighty-five-foot width down. I think the widest from at least my eye is probably the Highland Theater Building. I don't know how wide that is. Maybe Elisa can tell us. But I would ask you to make that consideration. That's where the second one comes from. Third one, single-family homes. You know, we've talked about this before. Those of you who are as old as I am, remember that that's what we had going down the west side of the street. That's what it was. It was single-family homes. So to bring that possibility back again, like in Wyoming or Marymount, where you have those, like, we have, we have beautiful homes coming down the street here. We have beautiful homes coming down the street here. So to allow that by right to continue down the street is something I would ask you to consider. Next is step-back buildings. Again, if you go out and look, you know, we have some, like, the realto building, the realty building right here is just one story, and it goes way back and then steps up. But we have some that are high, and I think in the, it's not on this, but in Elisa's illustration, it's a building that's very high and then steps up. And it just doesn't seem to me that it all incorporates the character that we have right now, so I would ask you to consider that. Going on to taking out those words from the Unified Ordinance, as again, as I talked about, we talked about that the survey does not comport with what the community plan is. If we put the community plan, chapter and verse, into the Unified Ordinance, we'd now codify the community plan. It's no longer a guiding document. It is a, it's law. And there was a court case in two thousand and eleven. It was a land disputed for Thomas, and deciding that dispute, the court relied exclusively on the community plan. So it's important. And I know it's outdated, and I don't think a lot of people would say that it's not backed by the evidence. So I know you haven't had a chance to do that because you're doing all this other stuff, but I would just ask that that be kept out. We can always put it in the Unified Ordinance to go forward, but for now, let's keep that out of the Unified Ordinance. That's the reason for that request. The twenty-foot setback, Elisa just put out all those different setbacks that we have right now. The average of all those setbacks is thirty-four feet. So I know a lot of people in Fort Thomas, probably many of you, myself included, really like green space. You know, we really like when the parade comes down the street to help place to put our chairs. People like the trees. We want to keep our downtown the way it looks. So from draft two to draft three, Elisa had proposed taking that front setback from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. So I would ask you that you adopt, well, Elisa just, Elisa just talked about putting it back to twenty-five feet. So thank you for listening to me tonight, and thank you for your consideration for all these meetings. I know they're long. I know this has been hard, and you guys have been wonderful. So thank you so much.
I just want to say that I second everything that Maggie just said, and, you know, I live on a totally separate part of town than she does. I definitely think regulating the, I thought I was talking loud, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold, but I think regulating the height, I know you guys came down to forty, but again, when I look at, when you drive through Fort Thomas and you look at what the heights of the buildings are in keeping with the character, I also believe that in other neighborhoods, that's, I mean, I agree, a hundred percent agree in Central Business District, but I also believe in some of the other neighborhoods, when you look at what the height of those buildings are, they're either much lower or they're just at that height, meaning you're talking two stories, not the, not the large three stories, not this massive number of units that I don't think. And again, I'm not trying to stop any business owner from being able to have what they want, but I just, again, we have such a gem here, I would hate that we turn into some of these other cities where it becomes so commercialized that we forget about what the uniqueness of our town is. And so I agree that, you know, shortening the width and keeping that small-town charm is just really, it's really critical, and you guys have been great to listen to us, and it's only because we care about the city the way that we do. We know you do as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else like to speak?
I'll be super quick. It's just to clarify something I must have not been clear before when I was speaking about transparency. And Jerry, you were looking at me and...
I appreciate your comment. We try and be as...
Oh, okay.
But I keep hearing these criticisms that we're not being...
Well, I just wanted to make...
And we can't tell eighteen thousand people then, you know, what's going on.
Hang on. I just wanted to make sure, I thought I was clear, I wanted to be there, that I wasn't accusing you...
No, I totally understand.
Okay, all right.
I appreciate it.
I was trying to defend...
I understand.
...defend you, and also, you kept looking at me, and I was like, no, not at you. All right, great. So, yeah, I think it's been very transparent, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Get my notes here since I got them in order. John Cofflin, Jr., seven hundred South Fort Thomas Avenue. Thank you all. I, between Kevin answering a few phone calls way back when, when I said, "How's this going?" when they were meeting at the Armory, and I think there has been a little bit of communication and elation with the thing at the coffee shop. I got more out of that just with a little bit of one-on-one, direct questions, direct answers. It was a good feel, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate her, and I hope you all take under her consideration of a comment on the slide that was up here about Seventeen River Road. I don't think you need to read between the lines and who that might be. But with that in mind, since they're all currently, everything right now is according to link's G I S, C B D, she's aware of that. And then she was so kindly to do this one, which says that, which she had on the slide. A concern, not really a concern, I'll just say an observation, and I picked up on something from the meeting before, was that the committee does not like spot zoning. And when I look at the drawing, this one here, this line coming down here, here's seventeen, and what is proposed, this would be the, get this one, get my glasses back on. The proposed was the M R two for seventeen, which we're all trying to get to M C two, like all the other properties owner wrote. So with this line coming down here, and the way it is, and this here is the Pet One's building, which is proposed M C two. But then, with the way the line would be drawn, would be here and here, you're going to have spot zoning of these two residences, which are twelve and fourteen Garrison, that they would be, yeah, they're right, they would be these right here. So all of this is us. This is Pet One's, there's seventeen, which is currently the C B E, that would be that. So you're going to have this little spot zone before it becomes, I think, this is our one.
It's our one, yeah.
Our one C. So, and a little bit of common sense to me is if this is going to be considered, and I hope it will, and I appreciate you, and I'll say thank you in advance. It's a little positive about some thinking that. It would be neat just to keep the line and keep this whole corner, the C B E, as it is. That sort of spot zoning, yeah, these two, these two here. So that takes care of that. Then I'll come back to that. Something, you know, I heard the gentleman talk at the very beginning, and they gave very respective resumes of themselves and their attorney and their legal knowledge and all of that. Cofflin really started in sixty-three. I was born in fifty-nine. I've had a license for forty-two years. I've sold and invested industrial, commercial, multifamily houses, condo, smaller plans for forty-two years. The one thing I will tell you and I think you're going to agree with is zoning affects the value of a property. So if you've got a textbook example of about five acres of ground, and you want to zone it industrial, and I can put something for semi-repair, a Peterbilt facility-type thing, it's worth one thing. If you're going to zone agriculture, and they can grow crops, it's something else, you know? So highway, commercial, neighborhood, commercial, residential, we all can go and say that. So the point that I would like to make is this. In nineteen seventy-six, when eleven hundred South Fort Thomas Avenue was purchased by my parents, it was zoned by this city and this county, general commercial. Then it was changed to professional office, and an email that I sent Alicia, I even gave her a letter that is on the city stationery when that took place. And then it was zoned C B D. Now today, we're going to define C B D to a little bit tighter parameters. So each time, over the course of history, it's gone like this. And ultimately, I don't know where the next group of individuals, five years or ten years, when this all gets discussed again, I didn't catch the time mark. And they're going to continue funneling it down. In some sense of the word, you're restricting the property owner that bought it under one, and they haven't applied for anything. So I'm not opposed, you know? I like to keep things moving forward. I like to keep things where there is a little bit of control to keep the community to our standards, which I feel that are higher than some, and that's good. But I also don't like the idea of putting handcuffs on property owners and on businesses of what they can do. And I understand we've got K R S one hundred, you can go apply for variances and stuff, but instead of doing that, I try to keep a bigger scope, instead of a magnifying glass a little bit possible. Just the limitations and restrictions from what little bit I read from the previous zones to what can be done today, they've shrunk, they've tightened up. So that was that point that I wanted to make. The other point is the height of the buildings. Eleven hundred South Fort Thomas Avenue is a three-story building. The buildings across the way, as you come up River Road and run into them, two of them are more than three stories. They're type higher than forty feet. So my question would be, is if a catastrophic event took place that was out of anybody's central, and the, her damage structurally, one of those buildings that could not be feasibly put back, could another three-story building be built there? And with the limiting of forty feet, it could not. And it goes to the point, I'm getting a frown over there, I understand something wrong. It goes back to the point of limiting what a property owner has today. So I understand maybe new construction. I understand some maybe modifications if it's a one-story and they want to increase it and add a story above or something, but for existing dwellings, I think it would be nice if you would allow them to replace what they have. Just something for you to think about, or something else, I should say. It seems like your plate's quite full. The other thing is, in talking with Alicia, I understand that parking is not a zone, so you can't really do anything with it. I spoke about, and I showed her a picture of a big delivery truck on South Fort Thomas Avenue trying to get out of a couple businesses, parking lots, and you got a blind spot. Not that the parking situation happened, but I also spoke last month of about an incident, or incidences, that took place at that River Road intersection, and it happened again Saturday afternoon, except this time, it wasn't a young child. A cyclist got hit by a car at River Road and South Fort Thomas Avenue. It's not a zoning... It's not a zoning thing. I know you can't do it, but it's a passion of mine that I've seen now multiple and multiple times. At one time, I saw a child get hit so hard that the child flew and went through the glass of our front door. It's not a zoning thing, but somehow, some way, I just feel comfortable and passionate that I have to say that. So whatever can be done, I hope can be complemented, because so far, the ones that I know of, the people have been fine. And today, if I have to look out that front window and see a white cloth pulled up over a body, I just don't know how I'll feel. So, like you said, it's not a zoning thing. I appreciate your consideration of putting 17 in with the other properties. And I think it makes common sense if you added two on Garrison, to keep the whole big thing, the whole corner, as his one zone. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you saying you understand it's not a zoning issue. And I don't want to pass the buck. Public safety is certainly an concern of ours, but the zoning work and stuff that you're doing, you know, I...
I get it.
As far as we being against spot zoning, I think it's generally a planning principle that you don't want to have. It's not just us, I think that's a planning principle in general. You don't want to have individual lots zoned differently than in your case. That's the whole reason behind having zones instead of individual lots, so I'm certainly agree with that.
Thank you all for your time and consideration. Anybody else? Then I guess we will close the public comment and deal with these issues one at a time.
Okay. So we'll start with 17 River Road, which is the parcel that Mr. Cofflin was just talking about. And to give you a little bit of background, we started this process, the homes that are on Garrison and in Shani and those sorts of things have been zoned Central Business District for a number of years. All of them, at this point in time, are, you know, non-conforming uses, which limits their ability to sometimes see mortgages and various other things. So as we started this process, a decision was made that we did want to shrink the Central Business District, but we did want to tailor it in a way such that those homes would be, you know, respected as a single-family homes, which is how the red zone got created. You know, in the case of Mr. Cofflin's property, that is a single-family home that's being used as one. But I certainly can understand that his desire to have all of them zoned in the district. And then the two on Garrison, you know, are being used as single-family homes today.
Definitely think 17, it would make sense to me.
Okay, so I think that's...
What is the difference between the turquoise and the brown there? What would we be doing on those lots on... Garrison.
So the turquoise is the core, and so that's a much more intense use. In terms of the red, the single-family homes are permitted use by right, they're not restricted. So they're permitted use by right, and they are allowed to have some sort of non-residential use. So there, for example, can be a shop house provided that it takes no more than 50% of the floor area of the home. So essentially, what we did was allow them some non-residential use, but recognize that they're being used as single-family homes and allow them those as permitted use. And that's how we navigated those waters, of not shrinking the district, but recognize how they're used, how they have historically been used, but not wanting to take away all of their non-residential rights. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
How do y'all feel about that?
So the first question is 17 River Road.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's a spot zone.
Let's all buy itself, put it over there.
But I guess the other two, I mean, do we, I'm not worried about those being their own little zone or whatever. I mean, do we, I thought we were trying to accomplish something by creating that sub-district. And it seems to me that that still exists. We haven't heard from the owner there that they want to put them in the core.
And in fact, we've heard the exact opposite, that people like the idea of those being used as homes as a thing, and so...
And if mortgages are easier to get now changed, that would be a goal that I think people want.
And it is, and that happened during the housing crisis of 2008. Homes that were non-conforming had difficulty getting mortgages at that point. And it has been, and that continues to this day, yes.
I guess I'd be in favor of just leaving the way we got them for those two.
But 17 River Road become part of the core too.
It does make the buffer between the CBD and the single-family, and those could go either way. Who owns 17, what they want to do?
If you're not sure, those two, you can cross the street.
Right, exactly.
So moving on to the Central Business District, so the question is including a maximum number of stories in addition to the maximum height. And the quest is that it be a maximum number of two stories.
I would like the two stories, but John had a very good point. So if that building right there, which is at the top, did get burned down or whatever, they could not build it back three.
They could.
I thought so.
They could, under two conditions.
Yes.
They can't have burned it down themselves. And we laugh about that. They can't have burned it down, they can't have caused the destruction.
Correct.
And they have to get a permanent short destruction within six months.
Oh, well, that's the two stories. Maybe no, that's a three stories.
I don't think they're going to get a variance.
Well, they could also get a variance, but they wouldn't have to, as the non-conforming regulations currently stand, if they meet those two tests.
I'm still very, very concerned with this, with up here at, right down the street here, with the, you know, maybe theater and stuff, going any higher than two stories there, very, very concerned. Parking issues, huge. People come down, there's not enough parking, there's on Miller and Lumley, people do not have driveways. There are several homes, many homes that don't have driveways there, and they have to use the street. So when we're creating these three floors, and even if the third floor's parked, where are they parked? They come on Miller and Lumley. They're doing it now for, to go into their restaurants, there are not many. There are people parking behind the buildings, but most of them are parking on Miller and Lumley. I watch them.
We've closed the public comment, but if you, I mean, if you have something quick. Just don't want to open the floor.
I'm just going to say, I thought I was trying to make the point of if existing buildings are not modified buildings or new construction.
This would be you.
I think Pam did that, she told me, she's the guy, the building came down, the other building came down, and then the building went up.
Correct.
In most cases, the parking would take care of itself. Some of them couldn't build three stories because the square footage required for a parking they provide. But I think in the CBD, they don't have the parking requirements, whatever we decide works.
Right, so there is a parking requirement, but you can waive that requirement. And you can waive it for any number of different reasons.
We did that on, I think that was the sake. They only have about half the parking.
And there are policy choices that are made by some communities that parking becomes something that is a public good that is provided by the public, because they want to keep the integrity of their downtown. Truthfully, I don't think that y'all have gotten to that level of discussion. And if you do get to that level, then you, you know, if you choose to limit it to the maximum of two stories, then you can come back and change the ordinance. If the underlying issue or concern of parking is handled through the provision of it being handled through the public.
I'm not supporting anything other than to say we do have a lot of public parking behind the year.
And you do, but there are two problems with that. There are, you know, it's your lack of weightlifting, which was discussed in Midway, but there was also that here.
We're working on that.
Yeah, and I think you should raise that issue. And then there's the ability to get from that parking.
Correct, that is a huge issue.
And accessibility is a huge...
It is, and people are parking the wrong way on Miller. They are parking in the wrong, I mean, they're just parking on a one-way street at that point, on the opposite direction. And they're pulling out of that, they're coming out, and they're going the wrong direction. And there's signs, there's pretty good signs, saying this is one way, go this way, and they don't, they go the opposite direction. So I don't know if we change Miller and Lumley to be two ways all the way, because it's very confusing. Because Miller and Lumley is only one way for one block. So it is very...
We can't do that, so...
No, 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 I'm just saying, no, I know we can't go with it. These are issues that we have to think about when we start creating three floors up, with how parking, how it's going to affect these side streets.
And as I said, if the issues that are currently being worked on are dealt with, then you certainly could, if you choose to have a maximum of these stories, then you certainly could come back and change the ordinance at that point in time. So right now, in the core, it's 40, you know? So we've already decreased the height.
So can we still, we still can add storefront on the bottom to levels above it?
So, you know, this is the issue. Theoretically, given the height of most first-floor commercial spaces today, you could probably only get two stories in 40 feet. But you heard how I couched that explanation. So therefore, there are community members who say, given that that is a bunch of couched language, you put a maximum store limitation on it.
Commercial guys like 10 feet above minimum, like first you could do, you get the storefronts. One Highland is really high ceiling.
It has really high ceilings, and then you have, then you have to have all the HVC in between. And then you have, you know, residential above that has a higher ceiling height, because that tends to be the standard these days.
But two floors by definition is storefront and one living above.
Or office or whatever else, because the stories are not going to be...
They'd never look like one Highland.
Correct, it would never look like, from the street, it would never look like one Highland.
I think it's too restrictive. One Highland's fine, you can shrink it down. Instead of 50, you could probably get it done in 45. It's got, it's got a roof to it. And like you say, the second, the living first floor, living second floor, living rooftop ceilings.
I'm against the three-story, or against limiting it to two stories. I mean, we hear, everybody say we like it the way it is. Well, we've lived with the ability to make three stories for however long. Why limit that now? And if they can get it done within, you know, 40 feet, if we're going to lower it to 40 feet, then great.
The house, the old Fort Thomas Avenue with it, how tall is it? Have you ever measured them? I mean, two floors and maybe an attic, right?
Over here. Up this way, down Midway they are, but up here, they're mostly just two stories.
For the attic on top of that, right?
Well, the only one that looks like it has an attic on top of it is the Junior League or whatever, not Junior League here, I'm sorry.
The Village Players.
So sorry. Yeah, Village Players. So that's really the only one when you walk down, because there's Subway next to it, one story. And there's the Old Dennis, that's only two stories. Then, uh, I'm trying to think, I think it's the movie theater. That is in the front, I think it's two stories, but in the back, I think it goes higher.
Right, but it's totally their traditional two stories, because it used to be the movie theater.
Yes, correct, exactly. So then you talk about the drugstore, it's two stories, and then there's the school building.
Got the floors, both floors.
Yeah, it's one story.
Economics will limit, you know, the square footage requiring parking will limit naturally. I don't think we need to restrict it anymore.
I think the height limit, but not the number of stories.
I agree.
I agree.
I disagree, so you can make that one.
And ultimately, you have to see counsel.
Well, I do.
And Larry, you agree with Tom and Sam? All right, Jerry.
Oh, you want, I vote.
You don't have to, you don't have to.
You can write it down.
I'm just going to go there in case of a hybrid.
Oh, no, that's... You're still on the best.
If a really nice project came along, and it needed to be three stories to make it work, and they could convince us that they could provide parking that would support that, then I would go with three stories.
Okay, so, and we'll talk about this at the end of the meeting. You know, all of this will go in front of the council for a lot of these discussions on 14th of May. And right now, so I'll add this to the list, it's something for them to discuss as well.
Reduce any content here, I think it's a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, that would be part of that, it's gone from 50 to 40.
One Highland, we've heard is people don't like it because it's too tall. So if we can add the 40, that only matters whether it's three floors or three...
So there are two issues, there are two issues that are to be considered. One is the mass, how the building feels from the street in the public ground. So you're handling that by shrinking it to 40 feet. The other issue is the intensity of the use. And so by putting an additional floor in there, whether it's residential or office, the site becomes more intense. And so those are the two things that are playing, that community members are concerned about. They're concerned about both the height and the intensity. And because the height's been lowered, the issue now, as they might think, I mean, I don't want to speak, but is intensity. And the intensity being having additional occupied space beyond two floors. So those are the concerns. So I think we, if y'all are okay, we'll move on to the next issue.
Or do you do like, one Highland, you got a parking garage underneath everything?
Right, you have a parking garage. I mean, so let's use the old theater building. If that came down, it would be easy to have parking underneath that, right, because of the difference in grade. Same thing could happen potentially at the fifth third building, because it's the site does this, you know, that kind of thing. All right, so reducing the maximum building width. So let's talk for a second about all the regulations that we're placing on these buildings. So today, your development standards say approximately this. All the setbacks and all the other standards are decided off by you. And the only thing that is definitive is the maximum building height, which is 50 feet. Through this ordinance update, we have defined setbacks. In some cases, we have defined separation between buildings in the supporting sub-zoning district. We have defined the width of the building, which is the question in front of us now. We have placed design standards that talk about how the buildings have to look. We have said that in order to prevent the mass that you feel from one Highland, the building has to be broken up every 30 feet, 30 horizontal feet. So we are placing an enormous number of development standards to deal with mass. So the question before you is, so one Highland is essentially 185 feet, as you see measured there.
That's where that number came from?
That's where that number came from. So the city building is 73 feet, something like that, because I measured it the other day. The third building is 75 feet, roughly. I mean, again, this is all off GIs, so, you know, take it for what it's worth, in terms of their measurement tools. So, you know, the question before you is, should we reduce the maximum building width, less than 185 feet?
One Highland does have, I mean, it is broken up into pieces that we see and come up, but it still looks like a 185-foot long building.
Yeah, but you can find how you define broken up. So it is broken up horizontally, meaning the floors are set. And I really need to diminish the people who design those, so please. But in terms of its horizontal deviations, as you're walking down... please, but in terms of its horizontal deviations, as you're walking down Fort Thomas Avenue, it feels as if it's one mass. So again, I am in no way need to degrade anyone.
Some of that, I, you know, how you build that, I think Fort Thomas was built on a ridge, you know, you gotta get close to the street, we address that problem. But how does a hundred and eighty-five feet have any to do with any of those in one high one?
No, that, that number was set to deal, to, to make that building conforming in that.
And even fourteen and other thoughts, Ron, or could people limit the width of it?
Yes, so to give you a, so typically, the widest maximum building width that communities use is about a hundred and fifty feet. But again, we started out this process with trying to deal with nonconformity as much as we could. Now, again, we've already made building nonconforming by recent height.
Lot lists there for the, the single-family ones, or, or those lot lists are probably, well, they can combine lots. Well, that's what I'm thinking about, you take two and put together what you get.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
You can take two and put together what you get.
Yeah, you could build a hundred and eighty-five foot wide building.
But again, but let's go, let's go back a little bit, but let's go back. I, I want you to understand.
Much more, that's what, that's how they built one high one, is they have a whole parcel.
Okay, so, keep in mind that a hundred and eighty-five feet only applies in the area that is purple, that's it. The maximum building width where it's blue, so like where those homes are, is seventy-five feet, which is roughly the width of the fifth third building. So the only place that that maximum.
Now, those residential lots right there are approximately fifty-foot.
If you get two, I mean, only a hundred.
But, but you could only build seventy-four, you might build it.
If you can't do it.
If that's the case, why are we talking about this? So we can't, that we can't do another company.
Correct. So the only place that you could potentially do that would be across the street.
That's the only place that would fit.
Exactly, that's the only place you're going to be.
Correct, because it's not going to fit at the other two locations, the old overbuilding and the old bakery.
So that's, that's the only one.
It makes us feel better to, to cut it back to something else that's gone in, but I don't see why we're reading out about that, because it's not going to, agreed.
What do you want to do?
Just leave it.
I like to cut it back.
Why?
If they can't build it, then can't, why, why worry?
But you can build it all in that one.
Yeah, so, so all that, where everything.
If some are bought all that, ah, go a little bit. Okay, what about the school building, because they're not going to get, that's not going to go to Subway, how many feet is that?
So that's what I'm just asking Robert to measure right now, from one way, from lower all the way down to that.
Well, not, because it's right at Miller, because the school building, the super, school superintendent building, that's not going to ever go, because I don't think that would be for sale to somebody, would it?
You never know, don't ever say the S School District sell coffee all the time, it's funny, I mean, I don't, I don't need to be.
Thank you, no, 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 thank you, Miller, then down to Subway, or it would be down to the, yeah, to that, how many feet is that?
It's lit, it's a deep one, I don't even.
Yeah, I see that.
I'm literally not looking at G I S right now.
So, I mean, let's just extrapolate, I mean, we know that, you know, we know that the, um, one high one is approximately a hundred and eighty-five feet. So, yeah, it could easily go there.
Yeah, I think it's bigger than that, actually.
Yeah.
I do.
Thank you.
It's really good.
Robbers all.
Yeah, I think it's bigger.
Those two.
Yes.
Does have that, too, I mean, front corner is a trunk, I, I mean, if we want to reduce it, that's fine.
I'd like to reduce it.
All right, what do we want, I mean, what do we reduce it to, that's everyone's, well?
Well, you're saying typically it's seventy-five.
No, no, typically the hot, and the core type is usually a hundred and fifty.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's what you did say, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Seventy-five. I know. Well, you could do whatever buildings.
One of our goals was to make existing buildings conforming, and, and so, I mean, we've got one other site that we could, that somebody could do this on, it seems to me, you put it at, leave it at the one eighty-five and accomplish our goal of making existing buildings conforming. We've got one more site that it could happen, practical matter is probably not going to, but.
But don't we want to keep it? I thought we wanted to keep it looking the way it does, so what you're saying is if you want, if it tore down, it would look like the other side, that's not keeping it the way it looks.
So the only thing I would say, and again, I'm not trying to weigh in any way, is this is in the historic district, and so, you know, and we, they would have to go in front of the Design and the Board in order to both demolish the buildings and replace them, which is another layer of protection. Again, it is not the same protection as a number, which is definable and measurable, but it is something else that would have to happen.
Well, and if it's seventy-five, maybe you have two buildings there, that's all, that's what it would be.
So you could, yes, you potentially could build two buildings, again, because there was no minimum separation between buildings in, in this area, you know, would it feel any differently if it was two seventy-five foot buildings that were five feet apart? I, I, I don't know that it would. It might, again, I'm not trying to, to weigh in here, I'm just pointing out.
I think it's all sort of moved, but if you want to reduce it to one twenty or one twenty or something, I don't see any problem with that. I agree that one eighty-five just seems way too big. They designed that in such manner that you have a masonry here, and then you have balconies, you have another masonry here, but doesn't really bring the mass up to all of it.
Not a side block, yes, I agree. I mean, I hate, you know, I hate to say we need to make this a change, but.
What we do.
What we do.
We do.
I get it.
One fifty?
Seems kind of grand, isn't it, enough to make it a decent thing? Again, if it's only those purple areas, forty feet tall.
It's only going to be the one way, it's not going to fit in the other way.
Well, just like we talked about, if one high one burned down, they can build it back up with what they've got, so, two hundred and fifty feet, and yeah.
Correct.
Can we talk about the setback?
No, we're getting there, I, I apologize, I'm, okay, so, the next one is permitting single-family dwellings by right in the core, in the supporting subzoning district, that is restricted.
I would agree with that.
I'm against it, if we, if we, oh, if we want a business district, I mean, you know, if we want a business district, I don't think we allow that, I mean, because now, if we get new built, if we get new houses built there. And, and if, I mean, if we want to truly be a bedroom community, and, and, you know, let's get rid of the, the business district, allow housing, because I think, you know, I think, you know, we're not that business friendly to begin with, if we allow houses there, I think we're going to end up with houses.
I agree, I don't think so, I mean, business, business property is much more valuable than residence property, someone that wants to buy business property and convert it to a residence is just losing a bunch of money.
You're, I agree, if, if you've got, if you've got business tenants who can continue to operate whatever else, but the harder we make it for the businesses, I, I don't know.
Houses just work really badly in the business.
I agree, too, if you're sitting on clean pizza paper and you want a central business district, that's where you want business to be, not a single family.
That's what we've got, yeah.
And that's what Conference of Plan 101 was way back twenty years ago, that was our goal, kind of thing, never to leave those as single families. Well, so even if you want them that, that they go under the theme of a central business district, it's like you reversion back just all single-family residents and throw out businesses.
And, and I don't think that that's going to happen, but I just, I guess I, if we, if we want a business district, I, I don't know why we would want to allow new residences to be built in the middle.
I agree.
And so I, I'm against permitting them by right.
And you got to build them closer to like one high one, so that you can put the garage underneath it, because all the property's fallen down, if you go, if all they push the building back, the harder it is to build a garage underneath it.
So we'll get to that in a second.
I was just saying, logical, important, that's what happens.
So where, where are we landing, by right or restricted?
Well, so where, where is this coming from? This is just community input.
Yeah, this is all community input, that's.
And that's, so, I mean, what you have said, we've had ten members of the community is, that is roughly, who have been represented there.
No. Well, I mean, that's the typical attendance that copies a conversation, but I am in no way I'm going to say that there's only ten people who say that.
I don't make the decisions based on how many people, I mean, if it's a good.
I'm not, I'm not, but I, I mean, so, but I just, you know, we didn't have that before, and so this is being suggested, and, I mean, I, I was thinking.
It's an emotional factor, it's people say, I don't want anything to change, if you don't want anything to change, you're never going to have a city to cross.
Well, but to, to that, to that point, I agree, and, and, but, you know, to the extent everybody says we like it the way it is, well, these are all changes to the zone, I mean, that has existed for however long, that allowed it to be just like it is, so we're changing that going forward, and so, you know, I think that's, you know, we're, we're trying to build in the things that people like, and, and everybody says we like it this way, well, there's certain things that they don't like, too, and we would rather get rid of that, but.
Are we talking about the existing businesses and houses, if those owners want to convert that house back to the same, if they can, or if they want to tear down that house and build the same plan?
So, if it's a restricted use, as it's currently defined, they can't, it's blessed in place, so the one single-family home would become a conform, just being used as a single-family home would become a conforming use. The ones that are currently have, you know, residential above and businesses below, if it is a restricted use, they could convert it back to single-family, but what they could not do is tear it down and put a new one up.
A new home?
A new home.
So, we're not only talking about a few areas up here. Is that, is that in the her?
Yeah.
No, we don't have any, are any of those homes in that purple?
No.
Blue.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was going to say, wait, no, those should be single-family.
Oh, and, and it's currently restricted, it's restricted, it's single-family. So then the question becomes, you know, one of the things I've also heard is what if someone, you know, they tore down Guardian Bank and U S Bank, you know, they would not be able to put single-family there, because it's restricted use. And what I'm hearing is y'all are okay with that?
I'm okay. But, hey, do you want them to be able to build a, a house where the bank is?
I'd be okay with that.
I'd be okay with a couple houses.
The house is there right now, I don't want to, I got my little blue, they're, they're going, they've gutted that thing, and they're rebuilding it, it's actually, but I don't want that to happen to the other ones, because I'll take an instance and get a, a good idea.
Well, what, what we're, I get what you're saying, but the houses that we're really talking about are the ones that have the businesses downstairs, there's a property place, there's something else that won't really ever seem like they have people, some business in them, but maybe they do, and upstairs is apartments, I guess.
I mean, perfectly, but we don't want to gut that building and make it a nice single-family.
I would.
But they could be, as a restricted use, they could, they could.
Yeah, and it could be beautiful.
But where it is, is not.
But we do.
But, but what I, but so the issue becomes, not so much those homes, it's the banks being replaced by homes.
Even one, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Even one next to the bank, across from the city, here. Single-family right now, I don't want that to be rebuilt or go free, single-family, because it's supposed to be a central business district.
That one's not on there, that's not on there, that's a green one, I'm seeing that by, by blue grass, right across from the fire department, it's green.
Yes, that, I mean, the one that's, it's currently on construction right now.
It's green.
It's right, that's, that's what I'm saying, all I'm saying. So all we're talking about is.
The floors.
Is the, the offway areas.
The forest, oh, yeah.
So the forest, all the way down shown, and then the two banks, the post office, the city building, which we know is not, probably not, and then the aqua area where the strip's announced.
But as a restricted use, a business operating in what used to be a single-family home could be converted back to a single-family?
Yeah. But no ones could be.
That's okay, I mean, but.
No rules.
But no rules.
Yeah, I think that's, when he makes us all happy, then.
I'm hearing that Pam would like, and if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting your views, please tell me.
Okay.
That she's, she likes that, those are all good things. You know, Guardian Bank, you know, filed chapter thirteen tomorrow, you can come over there. And so what we have, I think, is a difference of opinion.
Right.
That, you know, the four of you are, are more, like, you would like businesses to go, for example, where the banks are, and, and Pam's less, you know, with some minds that would convert it. So should I add this to the list of things to talk about, Council, since there's no reason here?
Yeah.
So we're moving on to the phrase critical mass, and the tense statement for midway.
I'm not sure what that means, what does that mean? I think that's defined landing.
Is it, is it your, sort of density that you're talking about, or you think, I don't care whether it's in there.
I, I think, I think it connotes a certain community member's instinct. And I'm using that term deliberately, connotes. And I don't intend it for short, but I mean, I think that's what they hear. Take it out?
Does, does it allow something now, I mean, I don't think it matters, so I guess I'm, I'm handling, you know, why worry?
All right, take it out.
Take it out.
Got it.
That's probably, that's true.
I'm wasting it right now.
So, okay, so the, a council member suggested this provision back a year, a little over a year ago, that because there was a concern about how buildings are perceived at sidewalk, that additional intensity could be allowed on the site if there was a setback in the building. So that's where this came from. The building below shows, you know, one story that is, you know, like at the sidewalk, and set it forward, setback.
Is there, in, in the area we're talking about, is there enough room to do that, a hundred feet back?
So a hundred feet is a long way, if, if that had not been specifically suggested, for example, I would have said fifty feet, that's a more, you know, that's a little easier. The only place you would ever be able to potentially do it might be the third bank, which also happens to be the site with the most fall-off toward the back. So, I think this is completely left up to y'all, I, I, I don't.
I guess I see no reason to, to remove it, I mean, it just doesn't seem like.
We have some buildings that have a one-story front, but they're usually, it was in addition to a house, it's.
Yes, yeah.
Like the Baker Building.
Less.
They tend to be out of the buildings, and I don't think anything about, what's, what's this?
I, I, I tend to agree, I mean, while I understand the intensity comment, I, I do tend to agree with Jerry, that they, they, they tend to be not very attractive.
Yeah, you tend to go flat roof, finish them up, do a few still works, and then tell you some local ones.
Get rid of it?
Don't do it, just.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just delete it. And I'm not going to tell people who own this building that we think it's up. So now we're talking about the front setback, so it's proposed to be a minimum twenty foot, the, the maximum setback, as I said, is thirty-five, community members have requested twenty-five as a minimum.
We got one that's seventeen now.
And you have one that's seventeen.
And we got people that are committed in front of twenty-five, too, and how many not before?
A handful, but again, I mean, it's a nonconforming structure, they could rebuild as long as they burn it down themselves and do it within six months. It's up to you.
I'm okay with twenty.
So maybe a type of runoff, the city building is sitting at twenty-six feet, so that, you know how that feels when you're walking on the sidewalk.
I'd give it twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Two and a half too.
Yes, for.
Okay, so the final comments that we have are the appropriateness of including intent statements in U D F.
Well, the community plan is a legal document that we're supposed to use. Taking it out doesn't mean it doesn't exist, and that we aren't supposed to base. I mean, if you want to get a zone change, you have to prove that what you want to do is in accordance with the community plan. Or I'm thinking.
No, you're correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but let's, let's just take the first statement first, which is the appropriateness of intent statements. Do we want to leave them?
I know situations in my previous job where there was a use that was not listed in, you know, permitted uses, and you went to that, that's intent statement to see if that use fit the general.
I think we've done that here with.
Yeah, I think that's why you have those intent statements, it's to help you make those kinds of decisions. That taking that just kind of leaves things wide open, that you can, I think it helps you to have those intent statements. It tells, it documents what you think this zone means and what happens are in there. And if something doesn't match that, you don't have to prove it. But if we take it out, we no longer have that ability to say, well, that doesn't really match what this zone is about. Why would we want to take that out?
I'm with you here.
I'm with you. Well, we're trying to do it.
All right, so leave the intent statement in. Everybody okay with that?
We're good.
All right, now we come down to all references to the community plan.
I'm going to reject that.
I agree.
I agree.
I think 10213 requires for amendment, finding that either it's, the existing zoning classification, I'm sorry, that's in either an agreement with the existing comp plan or some other.
And that's when you have the zoning amendment, a zoning amendment, that you have to make that finding.
Because the community plan, but it is a comprehensive plan.
Right, yeah, so.
Are you required to have that? So taking it, I mean, taking the reference out might make some appeal, but that doesn't mean we aren't supposed to base our decisions on the community plan.
Right, yeah. So the community plan for your community, I mean, the comprehensive plan for your community is the community plan. So keep, keep that in.
It doesn't change that, no.
And I end up here. Okay. In terms of next steps, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, tonight is the final meeting during phase three. There will not be any coffee and conversation sessions tomorrow. The next, the first meeting in phase four will be the council retreat on May 14th, which is tentatively scheduled from 8:00 a.m. to noon.
Where is that and what is that?
And so it's a, it's an opportunity for the council to delve into the zoning districts and then to also address some of the issues that came up here tonight.
Is it just a council?
It's just council.
It's a closed council?
No, it's, it's an open meeting.
Oh, okay.
Now, I don't know whether or not people are going to be allowed to speak. That I don't know, but it is an open public meeting. But how it's going to be handled, I don't know.
But it's an open, it's an open?
It's from 8:00 to 12:00, as it's currently scheduled.
Well, it'll be fun.
And then there are, then after that, the next meeting will be June 19th, which is a joint meeting, which is y'all's regular planning commission meeting between y'all and the city council. Anything else?
I would just like to know the concerns of the folks in, in the board. How are those concerns told to staff and city councils? And is there some research, legal research that needs to be done, that anybody can do? I mean, you brought up a point that we might not even be allowed to do that without doing something else first. The staff people here do is take those concerns out. I don't have to really be thinking.
Do they, they have to integrate all the one documents, or could they even just like, from our standpoint, they should, did they, they got their agreements, Green Street, they could leave that the same? It would work for us if we just recognized that?
I mean, yes.
It's not a meeting you have to put in the other.
It's a policy.
It's a license, maybe.
It's a policy.
So that's what we talked about at last, we need to full depth. Yeah, we talked about that a lot in life.
And yes, there is no reason, and you know, as Tim said, it could be left out. Because there, as under their H O A documents or C C N R, states you have, they are required to get approval by the city prior to needing extra.
Their covenants of rule of land.
But they are.
The veto power over one of the modifications to their, the exterior of it. There's a number of things that.
If you will discuss those things.
Yes.
I mean, personally, I wouldn't care if they changed, yeah, windows will look a lot like the windows they got, but they're much more fishing price. But that's nothing wrong with me to change, you know, but Green Street.
But that's in their, that's in their C C R. To do that, they have to do an amendment, and I don't think they would all do that.
Tim, what does it take to change their H O A agreement? Like if they want to disband or?
Yeah, sure. Probably even have a tandem.
Takes a 75% vote for them to disband. They cannot get rid of our veto power by disbanding.
Yeah.
I think there's still our restrictions on, you know, our, we want to keep the exterior the same.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Something to know practically, you know. Any other comments or questions? Entertaining motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you.